We are good to record or call this meeting to order at seven oh three P M. This is the January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two town council meeting. If everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance. The United States of America.
America.
And to. For which. And.
One nation.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice. Thank you. So proclamations and presentations, we have none at this time. So. Public participation or public petitions, communications and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you would like to speak, you can raise your hand with the raise hand icon. If you're on a mobile device, you can hit star nine. This will be for a two-minute limit. And I know that there is an eye-going item, name point one, that we'll be discussing later. For the purposes of that discussion, the primary parties involved in that discussion are the council, town. Field, so anyone outside of that area, I would strongly encourage to engage in public participation at this time. With that being said. I see Reenie Beesaw as first, followed by Dave Garrett, Matt Rude, and then Tim Griffin.
Reenie Beesaw, two thirty Grant Hill Road. And I did write my comments down just. Um, I don't believe that the town council should agree to allowing a study of the Birch Grove field grounds as an option for the proposed Miracle Field. I think a Miracle Field would be wonderful addition to our town, but I don't think the town should agree to consider having it on school property. While the proposal is that the field would be self-supporting, we know the turf field was also presented in that way and has never come close to being self-supporting. Once it's on town. Through, then what happens? I think it's irresponsible for the town council to agree to let the group spend this type of money on a study if we're not committed to having it at this spot. As a taxpayer, I don't want to have another hundred thousand dollar per year expense added for just one field. The Miracle Field Group should pursue a private property to install the field as not only would that add to the number of fields available in the town, it would also make it more clear that the town is not financially responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Reenie. So Dave, followed by Matt Rude and Tim Griffin, Jacob Mari. Oh, Dave, you are still muted. I'm going to ask you.
All right, try again.
Oh, you muted yourself again.
We'll try this one more time.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah.
I'm much better at soccer than I'm muting. Um, so for a third time, Dave Garrett, twenty-three Rodansky Lane, I'm the president of the Tallinn Soccer Club as well as a Tallinn resident. First of all, let me say that personally, I am in favor of the proposed Miracle Baseball Field. I, like many of you, have contributed to many of the fundraisers held over the last six months, and I commend Steve and Laura Lebo with compassion with this project. The field itself would be a great addition to the town of Tallinn. However, the key word is addition, not as it is currently proposed, a replacement. So a quick history. The Birch Grove location was originally requested this past June because the because that particular location had already been paved over for portables for the Birch Grove reconstruction and would make a perfect base for a baseball field, thereby saving them construction costs of, I believe it was a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Since that time, that field has been regraded and reseeded and is in the process of being returned to a grass field. We anticipate being able to play on that field again this coming fall. Therefore, there's no financial advantage to using that particular site. Next, let me provide a little bit of additional information and trust conceptions. The Birch Grove Field historically has been home to the soccer clubs pre-K through second-grade recreation soccer program. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, we had over two hundred and thirty children in the program, including many underserved populations. On a typical Sunday morning, we host over five hundred people at that facility, including players, coaches, families, and relatives at the field. Grass field with a Miracle Baseball Field would severely limit that program and in many ways eliminate that. Second, our top soccer program, which is the equivalent of Miracle Baseball and is a program specifically targeted for physically and mentally handicapped children, would not use the Miracle Field. The reason for that is the field as lighted and require a lighted facility because our offering is in the fall with very short days. Our program is currently hosted on the turf field at Tallinn High School. It has been a fantastic fit for the past few years. We've had rave reviews from all players and parents as well as buddies, and it's perfectly suited for our players that are in wheelchairs as well as other mobility devices. So in summary, the Miracle Field must be added, not a replacement. Therefore, the resolution this evening should limit the proposed engineering study to locations like Cross Farms, Crandall Park, and Tallinn Middle School with existing unused space and prohibit that study from investigating baseball, softball, football, cheerleading, tennis, basketball, pickleball, soccer, and tiddlywinks facilities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. All right, so we have Matt Rude, followed by Tim Griffin, Jacob Mari, and Brenda Felusi.
Good evening, everybody. Matthew Rude, twenty-seven Clifford Ave in Tallinn, a member of a soccer club as well as a parent in the club. I am one hundred percent in favor of a Miracle Field. I oppose the current proposed location as it would displace many of our years. And I feel that the field should be proposed at a different location in a newly added location to within the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So we have Tim Griffin, followed by Jacob Mari and Brenda Felusi.
Yes, good evening. This is Tim Griffin, president of Tom Little League and resident at eighty Doe Run. We in Tom Little League have girls and boys opportunities for practicing, playing in games, and developing as people. Uh, to be a little bit more specific, we had sixty-eight girls and three hundred and seven boys in our spring season this year, ranging from four years old to fifteen years old. In terms of the Miracle Field, the Tom Little League Challenger Division would greatly benefit from this field. Last year, Tom Little League had sixteen challenger players, five of whom were from surrounding towns who were able to use the program. Our T-ball division could likely use limited basis, but given the number of teams we have and the size of the proposed field, that would be very limited. The proposed location at Birch Grove works well for us. I do understand where soccer is coming from. We would probably be in a similar situation if the proposed field was going to be located, say, at Cross Farms or a highly utilized field that we have right now for our other divisions. So if there is another location that might be selected, know that that's where we're going to be coming from. If it's field that we already use for another division, that's not going to work well for us. Just very quickly, too, on another note, too, I think you have the E H H D coming up on your agenda. And I just caution you to think through anything that might, excuse me, restrict you sports in any way. The E H H D concluded in two thousand, in two thousand and twenty, rather, that a graduation that's outdoors would likely kill people. So just be very careful there there and playing and enjoying sports over the summer and in spring. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. So we have Jacob Mari, followed by Brenda Felusi, then Damian Berthium, sorry, I mispronounced your name, and then George Kotowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jacob Mari, thirty-two Stewart Drive. Although I like the concept, I think it's a good idea. I have trouble supporting building a facility like this up on school grounds. Given the very large and frequent replacement costs of the facility, I'm concerned that current fundraising schemes would be able to cover the cost of the project. And since it is on school property, it would most likely become the school districts and the town's responsibility afterwards. We are already in a very similar situation with the high school turf fields. Very expensive replacement cycle that we're going to have to continue to worry about for years to come. And I'm concerned about getting ourselves up in that situation again with this sort of field. I would like to just point out that adding a field like this will make it more difficult to fund other important capital projects, be they new or exciting or mundane but vitally necessary improvements like replacing school groups. And I would suggest that the town council collaborate with the Miracle League to try to find a location up on private property or some other alternative. I feel that those, that would be the best move at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. So we have next Brenda Felusi, followed by Damian, then George, and then someone listed as Miracle League.
Good evening, Brenda Felusi, for low. Speaking as a resident, first I noticed you have Eastern Highland Health District on. I applaud you for the opportunity to work as partnership with them to find ways to mitigate and address what is happening to our community with COVID nineteen. I'm very happy to know that you are having the experts in the fields come in and people who can help you understand what is happening with this virus and mitigate the impact on our community. Again, I'm looking forward to you working with in partnership. I was a little disappointed at the types of questions that were being asked and put in the agenda. And I hope you do listen to the experts. The high school fields, we keep talking about that, and it is an asset to our community. Anything that is worth having is worth upkeeping in the proper way. Hundreds and hundreds families use that field and that facility, and it's a great asset to our community. We need to stop using language that makes this seem like it's a hardship to our community when there are so many benefits with organized sports, sporting events, and places where our community can come together. So I'd like to see that people are starting to address the high school field as the asset for our community, and hopefully that will see the same kinds of conversations around our Miracle Fields. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. So Damian, then George, and then Miracle Field.
Good evening. My name is Damian Berthium, speaking here on behalf of Tallinn Lacrosse. I'd like to echo somewhat what Dave Garrett said on behalf of Tallinn Soccer a little earlier. Tallinn supports the construction of a Miracle Field, but we do have some misgivings about the location at Birch Grove. Birch Grove is where we have historically had our Lightning Program, which is K through two, and our third and fourth grade program, the Bantam Program, has practiced and played games there. The size of that field and the layout of the field at Birch Grove allows for either two or three fields for our small-sided games, which is the way that we play at that age group between kindergarten and fourth grade. It's a nice location, I think, for our youth players in that age group to play because it's also where they go to school, so they're feeling some, I think, connection with the fields and it kind of, you know, from my own experience with my own kids coming up playing through there, it just kind of becomes the focus of the community a little bit. We've had an opportunity over the last couple of years while Birch Grove was being reconstrued to see how lacrosse season works without Birch Grove. And quite honestly, we've had a shortage of fields. There were certainly times last year where we had kindergarteners through fourth graders sharing one field at the high school with seventh and eighth graders while there was a junior varsity game going on next door. So I liked what Dave Garrett said earlier about the Miracle Field being additive as opposed to replacing an existing field. And so while we support it, we would like to maybe see an alternate location explored and leave Birch Grove where, leave the Birch Grove fields the way that they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Damian. So George, followed by Jeff.
George Kotowitz, forty-two Carter Drive in Tallinn. I am a supporter of this field. I think it's a great thing for to get special needs and participating. That's what I think the whole crux of this is, is to get special needs to participate. Whether it's at Birch Grove or somewhere else, doesn't matter, but I think Birch Grove is an ideal place. Thank you.
Thank you, George. And Jeff?
Yes, Jeff Denarff, fifty-three Susan Drive. My daughter, Senevi, she plays challenger baseball. I'm part of the. I also serve on the board for the Twenty-First Century Tallinn Fund, whose mission is to promote sports for people with disabilities. And so when I think about the Miracle League field, I think about one thing. I think about community. Being a parent of a disabled child, it's challenging, it's difficult, but it's also isolating both for the children and the parents. And so an endeavor like the Miracle League field, it creates and it fosters community, both from the town surrounding towns. It not only brings together disabled kids, but it brings together their parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, friends, others within the community. You know, you look at a town like West Hartford, who's named one of the best towns to live in in the state of Connecticut. And one of the reasons consistently cited is community. And some publications actually specifically call out the Miracle League field as one of those reasons. And so building a Miracle League field in the town, I think, already adds to the outstanding community that we have, and it positions Tallinn as a desirable place to live. And there's economic benefits for all residents as a result of that. I think putting the field at Birch Grove would enhance an already beautiful elementary school that we have, and it would enable it to be used by all kids, both able and disabled, on a regular. As a member of the Twenty-First Century Tallinn Fund, we've supported the Miracle League field builds in both West Hartford and East Line, as well as the Kevin's Courts in East Line. And so our plan is actually to donate twenty-five thousand dollars to help build the Miracle League field, and would love to partner on other initiatives if there is interest in the Kevin Courts, for instance. And so in closing, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak. Kids like my daughter, they have few options. You know, being in a wheelchair makes it difficult to play on a normal field. My other two kids have many fields and courts to play on. In the state of Connecticut, there was two Miracle League fields and soon to be a third. And so whether I appeal to your hearts, your minds, or both, you know, this is a wonderful opportunity for Tallinn to foster our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's give it one more moment. If there's anyone that would like to speak at this time, where people hopped on, if you would like to speak, you can hit the raise hand icon. Otherwise, if you're on a mobile device, you can hit star nine. All right, seeing none, we will move on to seven A. Reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. We have seven A one, which is a report of the Mental Health and Substance Use Advisory Task Force. It's a proposal and recommendation from Health and Substance Use Advisory Task Force. With that being said, Lisa, if you want to kick it off with a summary, and then we can invite, I believe, the majority of the leadership, if not membership of the task forces here tonight to provide additional feedback.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Yes, tonight we have members from the Tallinn Mental Health Substance Use and Substance Use Advisory Task Force, and we also have Maureen Flanagan and Beth Bellady from our Human Services Department. And they are prepared with their first recommendation for the town council this evening. The Task Force Vice Chair and Secretary will review the proposal and answer any questions that the council members may have. So I would like to invite Becky, Becky Moore, and is Madhu, yep, Madhu is here as well. If you'd like to go ahead and present, please.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. First, I want to thank the council for taking the time to hear us tonight and for having us. So I am the chair of the Mental Health and Substance Use Task Force. Just a little bit about me, I've been in the mental health field for over twelve years, working off it and private practice, also an active member of the Tallinn community for ten years. So this task force was kind of a collision of my two worlds. We currently have, I think, ten members, two of which are Board of Ed and two of which are town council members also. We do have a vacancy, so for everybody in the community that is here tonight, if you're interested in helping us do this work, please apply. Open seat and would love to have you. So I have the vice chair and the secretary with me along. There's some other task for members on this call, but it will be primarily me and Madhu and Jacob presenting our recommendation and answering questions. So Madhu is here. I don't know, Madhu, did you want to say anything or just hello? I'm here to answer questions if needed.
Yeah, no, I'm here if needed, you know, looking forward to this.
Awesome. Thank you, Madhu and Jacob.
Everyone, I'm one of the Board of Education members of the task force and also the secretary. So happy to answer any questions or help work out any sort of confusions of our proposal tonight.
Thank you, guys. All right, so to make this easier, really to make it easier on me, I'm going to pull up and share my screen and go through it. Is that okay? Is that allowed? Am I allowed to share my screen, Steve? Or anybody? Is that okay?
Steve, is it okay with you?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Otherwise, Becky, if you want, Lisa could share her screen and go through the slide for you if that was, if that would be okay. If you'd rather.
The one that I have, I would rather because mine has like tweaked wording on it, and we wrote it in November, so there's been like a few things that I've added to it, but nothing substantial, just wording changes. So if I could have permission to share my screen, that would be awesome.
Yeah, that'd be fine. And then we just probably would need for the record, I think, Lisa, a copy of that emailed over for our packet or updated minutes.
Absolutely.
Right, great. So yeah, just a moment, Becky, Lisa will give you the authority to share your screen.
Wow, I feel powerful.
If you want, if you could read uh, bumped you to the top of the list so that Lisa can find you.
There you go.
Okay, let me know if you can do it now.
I sure can.
Okay.
Okay, so this is just up in my Google Docs. I just think it's easier for everybody. So over the past, not even seven months anymore, I think we're coming up on a year. The task force has been assessing the needs of the town. We've had the pleasure of speaking with many stakeholders, including State Trooper Eklund, Reverend Gallagher, Dr. Willett, Nancy Dunn, David O'Rourke. We have since added to that list, and we spoke with Bruce from the Recreation Department in Tallinn, and we spoke with the School Resource Officer recently also. In addition to having these stakeholders at our meetings, we've been listening feedback of the public and looking at the structure programming of other neighboring towns. We did also create a subcommittee to look at data gathered from Demus's Region Four Priority Report and to assess if we need to conduct an independent survey. That is an ongoing subcommittee that Jacob leads, so if there's questions about what they're doing or where they're at, he definitely can answer any of those. So from all of this info, we've identified two areas of need, and these are ones that just came up over and over and over again. And when the task force sat down as a collective group, these were the themes. So the first thing that continues to come up is community education and engagement and some subpoints about it. So many members of the community may not know what services are available, and they don't know how to access them. Many members are familiar with the mental health system, and as somebody who's navigated it for twelve-plus years, even I need support navigating it sometimes, so it is very tricky to navigate. Programming offered by Human Services is often not well-attended by community members. Stigma has been brought up as a factor heavily influencing Tallinn. I believe pretty much every person we spoke with brought up this concept of stigma and how it many have reported that community members won't seek out services, or they report feeling ashamed or viewed in a certain way by the community. Many members of the community do not or may not understand mental health and addiction. And the town of Tallinn does not have a dedicated prevention and wellness coordinator. The other theme that came up every time was that there are many opportunities to expand community engagement in Tallinn, but there's no one identified to really evaluate what is the community need, what will the community respond to, and then coordinate the efforts. And then the amount of time, energy, and resources that will be needed to expand upon community education and engagement requires a dedicated prevention wellness coordinator. So during our meeting with David O'Rourke, he is the CEO of H V Hockenheim Valley Community Council in Vernon. He described a partnership that H V C C has created with the town of Vernon. H V C C employs a community clinician, and that community clinician meets the assessed needs of the town of Vernon. That individual is an employee of H V C C, not the town, and works in partnership with youth services, human services, public to wellness of the Vernon community. So given the information that I just outlined, those needs identified, the task force believes that the Tallinn community would greatly benefit from pursuing a similar partnership with H V C C. I say similar because we are different than Vernon, so it would not mirror it exactly. The task force has identified the following roles and responsibilities that that assess needs of the Tallinn community outlined above. And just a note about this, we have, Nancy has been a huge piece of our work, so she has, and then Maureen more recently. So we have worked with Human Services, and there's not a whole lot of overlap, maybe a little bit, but so these are some of the things that we believe, the task force believes, would be beneficial as for prevention or wellness. So I won't read all these verbatim, but so providing case management, linkage with resources, consultation with natural supports, advocate, empower, and assist community residents in making decisions about routine and urgent behavioral health care, working with the H V C C Executive Director and H V C C Program E evaluator to conduct community surveys, assess community. So part of this role and part of what H V C C did with Vernon is the full assessment of, okay, what can the community, what would they respond to, what are the needs, and then implementing those things. Initiates and develops appropriate programming aimed at education, engaging the Tallinn community, coordinating all of that, serving as a resource to the public schools, offering educational programs, providing information to the community about available social services, using an in-person approach, engaging residents to increase awareness of relevant services, collaborating with community partners, ensuring community residents have priority access to all services at H V C C, advocating and raising awareness through social media, through the community, whatever campaign is necessary, attending and informational sessions that are appropriate, participates in R F P development, requests for proposal grants when appropriate in conjunction with town staff, responds creatively to identified community needs, and mostly and probably most importantly, works collaboratively with the Director of Human Services and Assistant Director of Human Services to effectively effectively meet the needs of the Tallinn community. In closing, the In closing, the will provide community engagement and education for the town of Tallinn, utilizing an eclectic approach to community engagement and education. And I, we put eclectic in there because we would want the approach to include creativity, innovation, evidence-based practices with the ultimate goal of improving the overall wellness of all the residents in Tallinn. So that's our document that we had. And now, if there's anything informational that's important to add in there, Madhu or Jacob, is there anything I missed?
I just wanted to stress that this wasn't an exhaustive list, that this wasn't like our final recommendations, you know, we, we are not dissolving after this, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Yep, we, we wanted, we came to this conclusion and we felt that it was okay to go forth with giving it to the town council. We still have, are working on a variety of other intention to dissolve after this. We wanted to just start getting stuff out there, budget season is coming up. You know, things, we wanted to get something out there as soon as possible. Thank you, Madhu. Jacob, any, any other things I missed?
I think you covered it.
Great, and yeah, okay, so now Steve will just open it up to questions and we'll answer as.
Yep, and I do see there is already one hand raised, Councilman Nuccio, and then if anyone else would like to, from the council, have any questions or comments or feedback, you can hit the raise hand function.
I'm good to go, Steve?
You are good to go.
Thank you. Hey Becky, nice to see you.
Good to see you also.
I have a couple of questions on the information that you provided here. First, you mentioned briefly being able to survey after you reviewed the Region Four information. And I myself have reviewed that information multiple times and I find it is 100% not applicable to Tallinn. And when I've pushed back on that, you know, I've been told, well, you know, Region Four includes Hartford and all these other, Enfield and all the other places. And so I would definitely be interested in figuring out how we could do some sort of survey to review the needs of our town specifically. And when I've asked, they're a, definitely they don't seem to have the resources, they aren't really interested in doing it. So I'm wondering what you're thinking specifically to be able to narrow down into a Tallinn-based kind of survey rather than what we have from Region Four?
Right, so I'll let Jacob talk a little bit about the subcommittee in a second, many updates on that. But my understanding, and I say my understanding, from our conversations with David O'Rourke C is that part of the role of this collaboration with HVCC is exactly that, a needs assessment of what the, what do the residents in Tallinn need? What are the problems facing, facing the residents? What are the barriers to care? All of those things, from what I understand in our conversation to him, that is part of their role and their collaboration in Vernon. So our thinking is that would play a great deal, you know, the part of this collaboration with HVCC. Jacob, do you have any more info about maybe your conclusions about the survey or where that subcommittee is at?
Yeah, I can speak a bit to that. So we're, this, this document was a little bit outdated because I think we approved it in November. So we haven't just done the DMOS report, we've looked at a few other pieces of data, some national level. And the next meeting, we're going to be looking at some data that was done through a survey, the service survey through the Tallinn Public Schools. So at this point, we're kind of synthesizing a few of those different sources and we'll write up the final report sometime, hopefully in February, with our final conclusions. My personal thoughts on that is you're right. Because that Region Four includes so many different parts of the state that really and there's only so much you can learn from it. The one thing though is if we do do a survey and again, I haven't completely made up my mind about whether I want to really push for that or not, although it's certainly something I'm considering of recommending to the task force as a whole, is that in order to do it right, we may want a contract with somebody just because if we, if we don't do it right, we could get some very luckily, one of our members who serves up on this, on the, on the subcommittee, has a bit of a background up in this experience or up in this this area of collecting data and he's been informing us a bit about that. Dr. Daryl Irwin from the University of Connecticut. So that's just something to consider, that it may be something we need to invest in. But hopefully I'll have some more that in a month or so.
I just wanted to piggyback on what Jacob said, yeah, I would agree with, probably if we were going to do a survey, we would probably need to contract with someone because we, we really have one shot to do this and one shot to get it right. So if, unless we want to end up with a bunch of invalid data, it would make no sense.
Yeah, I would agree, I think this is a good opportunity for ARPA money, but two things on that. One is they're going to be coming out with a new survey and well, they're going to be coming out with new questions in January for the new survey for the regions. So I don't know if, keeping that to review whether or not the questions that they're asking or any kind of data that we can get on our own would be useful. But you also mentioned something that concerns me is that making sure if we're going to employ someone to do this, if we're going to actually have somebody do a survey, we need to be extremely confident and clear that it is going to reach people in the community of success. When we put out just surveys to the regular people, you know, we get a couple hundred people, there's 15,000 people in this town. So I would want to make sure that we're really getting a response from the greatest number of residents that we can, so it's a true gauge of the community and not just of the people who always speak up. Because that doesn't necessarily give us the true overall picture. So I think, again, I think this is a good use of something that could come between need to look at. And there's also a lot of stuff that's going on at the, at the, the state capital level regarding mental health that we may be able to leverage here too. And I'll let you guys know as I hear more about that. But the only, the other question that I had Becky is, I was wondering if you could educate us a little bit on what exactly is a prevention wellness coordinator and what it is that they're handling?
So all of those bullet are proposed, you know, this is, these are the types of things that prevention and wellness coordinators handle. We got that from Nancy was so great and sent us like 10 other job descriptions of prevention and wellness coordinators. Our, as a task force, so generally a prevention wellness coordinator works within the community and their sole purpose is exactly that, so they are utilizing a variety of methods to the community to coordinate efforts to improve the overall mental health of the community. They, they work to prevent problems from occurring before they actually occur. They aim to be proactive opposed to reactive. Having somebody like that employed in a town, which a good amount of our surrounding towns and areas do have a prevention and wellness coordinator of sorts, they may not be called that. It's a we do have youth services, human services, they are phenomenal. But they're only two, three people and they focus a lot on actually helping managing the, the people, the case management, getting the resources, what they need. But if we want the community to be more engaged, somebody has to do those efforts. Somebody has to figure out how to reach the community members. Somebody has to figure out what services would be helpful. To identify, will the teenagers actually respond to this? And that is above and beyond what any, what human resource, human services, I'm sure they would gladly do it. But it will be great to have somebody in here to do that. Does that help answer your question? Plus all of those bullet points that we had?
I think it does, so I know Nancy was doing some of that stuff and she was doing like the crisis counseling types of things. So would this be a, obviously if we go through HVCC, it's a contracted amount. And the reason that I like that is the contracted amount, we can see how much it's being engaged by the community. If we blow through our contracted amount in six months, then we need to consider being able to fund more to, to continue on for the rest of the time, hopefully using the ARPA money. If we see that we're not using it and we're doing all these things and we don't, may not have as big I like the idea of contracting with somebody else to get a gauge of what the community need is. But I'm seeing this as something then that would be additive to what Maureen is now doing, what Nancy did do. So it's like in addition to that, is that correct?
Yes, it's meant to supplement the work of Human Services. So it is in addition, now Maureen does a lot, you know, she does do pieces of that already, but you know, it, say in heard people that are, have mental health needs and they're in crisis and they need a therapist, Maureen's one person, right? So she does, the idea is that this would supplement and really further expands the, the human services and mental health resources engagement that we have in our community.
All right, and then the last question I have is, do you have a quote from HVCC on cost for this in the structured going book?
Oh, um, no, this is what I will say about that. The task force really did grapple with, should we be the ones getting this quote, you know, should we really go into this? And we decided to stick to our, you know, our mandate was to assess the needs, bring them to the town council. We did not proceed with getting a quote or get to that point. I can speak from my own experience and this is completely not a quote from HVCC, but from my years in nonprofit agencies, from things I've observed. We're not, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're, we're not even talking six figures. You know, this is not going to be something that is overly expensive. But I can't really go into any more detail with that because it would really depend on the position and how much, you know, the salary alone depends on, do they have a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, fringe benefits, anything else that HVCC wants to add in there. In addition, from my understanding with HVCC, you can actually kind of piecemeal things too, you could say we want this and we want that, which would change the price. So there's no real way to get a quote. We wanted to bring this to the town council and then kind of let the town council run with it. Certainly available for more consultation, more discussion.
But at least have all the contact information so we can move forward, so that is it for you.
Of course.
Thank you very much, Becky, thank you guys all for what you're doing, I truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio, I believe John is next, followed by myself and then Councilman Murray.
Very good, thank you, Steve. So for those of you who don't know, I'm part of this task force and I've been part of it since the beginning. And I did help recommendation. The thing that really got me interested in HVCC, I met with David O'Rourke twice. And then that was prior to him presenting to our group. The thing that really got me interested in working with them is, one of the first things he said was, we need a needs assessment. Because we may not even know what we don't know about what's going on in town. So his thing was, we need to do a needs assessment and then we can, we can go from there and, you know, we, we'll have a contracted amount needs assessment. And as Ms. Nuccio said, we may go through that money quickly or we may not. So if the contract is for a year, a year from now, we can say, well, we need to dial this back because Tallinn doesn't really have these needs. You know, you're doing a lot in Vernon, maybe Tallinn doesn't need these types of services. Or maybe they'll say, we, we, this is what we found out, we need more services. This is, this is what we need to do because we have these people that are, that are in crisis and, and do need these services. And just as a point of note, there Tallinn residents that are currently being engaged, this is when I spoke to them, this is over the course of a couple of months. But there are over 50 Tallinn residents currently engaged with their services, so they're, they're, to me, so that tells me there is a need out there. And I think the most important thing to do is, is to get that needs assessment and we can get that by, by contracting with them. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, John, John has been super helpful through the whole process and I've really appreciated all.
That's, that's great, thank you, John, thank you, Becky. So I had one quick question regarding the position, are there any communities that have a similar one outside of perhaps Vernon? Or have you, have you seen any other examples of a town contracting out this type of service from other communities, not from a financial aspect, but more so just as a a comparison, just to see how it's working for other communities?
I believe Ellington out with the Village, other people on the task force can, I, I think that's what they had said. They are working with, I think, another agency. In general, the surrounding towns that, well, surrounding towns that are similar to us, they generally have much more staff, a little bit more robust of a human services, youth services department employed within the town. Necessarily as much of a need to contract out. I do work in Colchester and I work a lot with Hebron, Colchester, Lebanon, Mansfield, doesn't, they're kind of, they're a little bit different. Plus they have that big community center, so they have a whole lot of stuff going on for them. But I do know Ellington, I believe, is contracting with the Village, but don't quote me on that, I'm like 95% sure.
No worries, I appreciate that, and no, thank you, this is a very first recommendation and I think it sets a good gold standard for future recommendations.
We will try.
Of course, and I also echo, I think, Councilman Nuccio's comments that this does seem like a very apt, if feasible, application for the ARPA funds, once those are finalized, if, if this is a reasonable use of it, I think, with everything people have gone through across the spectrum of ages, you know, gender, races, economics that been at the forefront for so many people, so I think this type of position is valuable to, to explore.
I will tell you as a mental health professional, that the amount of individuals that have been impacted specifically by the COVID pandemic is, it's, it's just astronomical. The amount of people incoming for services, the amount of requests that are coming through for counseling specifically related to COVID, not to mention that we as a community have to learn to engage on a completely different level. We can't just have everybody in the same room, you have to understand technology and Zoom. And this is, this, this recommendation was also made with our senior population in mind also. You know, who can't necessarily, maybe don't really understand Zoom or virtual and what are they missing? We were really hoping that this would benefit them also.
No. Okay, so I will move on to Councilman Murray, followed by Councilman Utacheck.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to the task force. Although I'm new to council, I've been following this task force for, since its inception. And there's a lot of members of our community who have engaged in different ways with the task force. So thank you for all the work you're doing. I think that the recommendation that you is very impressive. And certainly it's clear there's a lot of work that went into this. And I'm very excited to see where it goes. My specific questions have already been asked and answered, so I don't have any questions, I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you.
Thank you, Katie, it certainly is a, a work of love and labor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Murray, Councilman Utacheck.
Also part of the mental health task force newer, started in November and the limit is that everybody on the task force and all the people that come and give their input. I just have a, a few questions. So would we first go back to HVCC and ask them what it would be? And then come back to the council with that? Or is the council asking them to go forward and work on how much it would cost and then bring it back? And like Tammy and Steve has said, it is a really good opportunity to use some of those upper funds if that's what council decides.
I would say that the next step would be to decide if they want to move forward with this, if they, that's what they wish to do. And if they do, I would say somebody should contact, I mean, John's already got contact with him, maybe contact David O'Rourke and see if he can come to, you know, that would be my recommendation. The mental health task force is really trying to stick to the assessment and recommendation opposed to like the operationalization because that Um, opposed to like the operationalization because that, that's a whole, that's a whole nother ballgame, which, uh, important. But we're trying to focus on that. So I think our idea is that we would hand this off to the council if you guys decide that. If the council decides that you want to move forward with it, somebody should contact David and, um, certainly get in touch with him. Get more information about the costs. Um, and also, you know, certainly the ARPA subcommittee should or could. Discuss if this would be an appropriate use of it and something they would endorse for that.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna actually piggy. Um, it may make more sense from a procedural standpoint for the ARPA subcommittee to, to do that if it's gonna, if we're thinking it's gonna be funded with ARPA.
So then I guess. I think it's a great thing to send off. I guess, Steve, I guess the question is. If we decide tonight, um, to have somebody, maybe like John, follow up how much it would cost. Bring it back to the council, then if the council agrees, send it to the subcommittee or just. I don't know, Tammy, at least you send it right to the subcommittee.
I would say my perspective is, is as long as there's no overwhelming opposition to it being re, re, you know, referred to this ARPA subcommittee. I think we've had enough positive conversations that perhaps John and maybe Becky could communicate, kind of, you know, contact information to. The interim town manager to begin collecting that information and then have it, um, submitted to the ARPA subcommittee for. Study and review. That, that's at least my perspective on the process. That seems to be the most appropriate. And I see Lisa shaking her, nodding her head. So I'm sure that's, if you want to add anything, Lisa, go ahead.
Uh, no, that I was going to raise my hand to suggest that, um, they maybe work through me. And I could, you know, try to follow through with everything. And again, if there's no objection, we bring it through the subcommittee for discussion. And then from there, we can come back to council with a report. However, if it goes that, which way it goes.
Yeah, because I think ultimately if, um, if we moved forward with it, or if, if the ARPA subcommittee found it to be an appropriate use. Then that would be where I think from a procedural standpoint, the council would then authorize the expenditure. Uh, like they have in the past for certain expenses.
So I guess my last question, because I know Sammy, like, has a hand, so then we would, once we get. Done, and then would we work on? How much it would cost for the wellness, um, wellness coordinator?
Are you asking me?
Is that a question towards me?
Um, I guess anybody might have that answered.
So I think Colleen, what's gonna have to happen is, as Steve said, um, we'll get the contact information from John. Talk to the resource that he had for the information that's on. Get a quote. And then we discuss it at ARPA to say, do we want to bring this forward to the full town council? And if we vote yes on that, then at the town council, they have the ultimate say. If they say yes, then we go through with the contract as described, um, from HVCC. That would be the, the path I would see it taking.
All right. Thanks, Sammy, for clarifying. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Utecheck. So we'll go to Councilor Khan. There you go.
Hi, everybody. Uh. My name is Sammy and, uh, I'm a new member on the board. For me, it's a learning. Process, so I don't know any much about it. But the, what I heard from Becky and, and Madhu. I just want to thank you for you guys that, uh, whatever you're doing. I guess, thank you for, uh, everything. And hopefully, uh, at some point, I'll, uh. I'll meet with you guys and probably get into the system. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khan and Counselor Luba, your hand is back up.
Uh, thank you, Ms. I don't know, just as a, uh, as a formality, if we would need to, uh, make a motion to officially have it referred over, uh, have this issue referred over to our, uh, subcommittee. Uh, for them to take action so that they can officially make the request for a, uh, RFP. Uh, for, uh, regarding the, uh, position or the assessment and then take action on it. So if that's the situation, then, uh, I would officially move that just be, uh, that this issue be, uh, relayed over to. Uh, for further action regarding obtaining that, uh, the, uh, quote for, uh, for services.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I am fine with that. So there is a, the motion was made by Counselor Luba and seconded by Councilman Nuccio. Uh, is there any further discussion? I'll just add that, yeah, I think that is an appropriate, uh, endorsement to move this forward in the next step of the process. So if there is no other discussion, I'll just do a quick roll call vote. So Vice Chair Regan. Councilman Utecheck.
Definitely an I.
All right, Councilman Murray.
I.
Councilman Nuccio.
I.
Counselor Luba.
I.
Counselor Khan.
I.
And I have an I, so that is unanimous. So this will be referred over to the ARPA subcommittee. And I think that does, unless there's any other comments, questions for the sub, for the. Seeing none, Becky, Madhu, Jacob, thank you. And, and for any other members that are on the, on here for the task force, thank you for your time and doing this presentation. We're looking forward to moving through this first step and looking forward to future recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much, you guys. See you soon.
Hi, everyone. Great. Thank you. All right. So we will be moving on to. Ports of Town Council Liaison. So just going through my list here, I will start with Vice Chair Regan.
Uh, nothing to report this week. No meetings attended.
All right, great. Thank you. Councilman Utecheck.
I have five things to report. Um.
Keep it busy.
I pass it to John to talk about the task force. No, I'm just kidding. So I'll start with, uh, ARPS. Uh, we'll be meeting on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, seventh, at four fifteen. Um, this is more of a procedural meeting, establishing the chair's secretary, setting the meeting schedule. Um, this was, we're told to do this by the town clerk. Um, we'll also be discussing rules and procedures. And just one other thing, Ms. Hancock has received the final rule from the Treasury Department, which will take effect capable first. So I'm sure. Dug through it or is digging through it. And so that's it for the ARPA subcommittee. And then the commissions with people with disabilities have not met, uh, will be meeting on January twentieth. At six thirty, that time is gonna be changing from seven o'clock, but we need to vote on that. Um, next regular Board of Ed meeting is this Wednesday, January twelfth. I'll be going to the January meeting and Councilor Luba will be going to the February meeting. And then, um. This is for John and I, I brought it by John, so he agrees that I wrote up this correctly. So, um, last meeting was on January third. Roots, um, Watts, the Director of the Recreation Department was there, letting the task know what program is offered for residents. And his past experience, um, with the teen center when he worked in Vernon. A future request from some members of the task. Force was to see if a guidance counselor could come to the task force, um, to give their, what they see with the students there. Same as what they did with the SRO attending the meeting for Q and A. And then possibly having students do an anonymous survey monkey about mental health. And the last thing was, we met yesterday, January tenth, the Recreation Advisory Board. Um, the next project they're working on is the new yoga, um, floor, which is part of this. Youth basketball starts this weekend. Discussion took place as far as offering full or part-time summer camps. And discussing that there should be more of a specialty camp such as one day is wiffle ball camp, another day is dodgeball. I think they're gonna be reaching out to the Board of Ed, um, Dr. Willett. Because I think it depends on if you'll be offered summer school again, um, for COVID reasons. And then the last thing they discussed. The policy and no changes were made. That's all I have.
Thank you, Colleen. Uh, Councilman Murray.
Thank you. Um, the Agriculture Commission, um, met last week and they have a number of ongoing issues that. They're working on, including the farm to table dinner, um, which I know, um, they were pretty excited about. And continuing discussions about farmers market on the green, which as we know, will probably come before us soon. And Birch Grove met last week as well. Um, just a few change order stuff to finish up. Uh, the school system, uh, presented or, uh, asked if the project could. Fund a few additional items that otherwise the school district would be paying for. And after kind of a confirmation that those items are. And the building committee did ask, uh. To get quotes on those items so that we might be able to pay for it as part of this project, as part, instead of having. The school board pay for it.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Murray. Uh, Counselor Khan.
I don't have anything to report in this issue.
Thank you. That brings me over to Councilman Nuccio. You are still muted.
I think you were sort of going crazy. You started jumping all over the place. I'm now unmuted. I have nothing to add. I did not have any meetings from the last town council meeting.
Great. Thank you, Council.
Oh, I'm sorry, cut off. Council member, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Uh, if Colleen has something else to finish, uh, to add on, that's fine.
I'm, I'm so sorry about that, Lou. I always forget, um, Tammy, uh, and if you guys have anything to add, please add it. So if you have anything that I missed.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Lou.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, that, uh, I did have one meeting where I did sit in, uh, uh, as, uh, the liaison for the Planning and Zoning Commission. That, uh, there was a few issues that were discussed. They did discuss, uh, amendments to section five point two as well as sixteen point three. Uh, the zoning regulations regarding farm brewery, farm cidery, farm distillery and farm winery. All of my favorite things, um, that they were all looking at, uh, at the, uh, and discussed the issues regarding, uh. Changing the, um, the regulations to allow, uh, a, uh, local. Local organ or local businesses that have either a, um, uh, cider mill or something along those lines. Make, distill, bottle and sell, uh, either, uh, their ciders or other, uh, distilled or brewed items. Uh, that there was discussion regarding the, uh, the, the scale of it, that they were looking at the smaller scale operations. But that, uh, also discussed some of the issues regarding, uh, regulations where if it's. Uh, the items are grown here or processed here, but then have to be shipped somewhere else off, off site for buy. Uh, there was a lot of discussion regarding that, that they're still, uh, taking a look at that and are going to try and figure that out. They also did, uh, discuss the issue that we, uh, brought up at the last meeting regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, that, uh, that I did have a discussion with them on that as well. That, um, that there is going to be a request coming from, uh, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, to, uh, possibly have a joint meeting with the town council to discuss the issue further. Um, that, uh. That there were record, that, uh, and during their discussion of the issue, they did recognize that there were some issues, uh, that needed to be addressed. Uh, that, um, that we did get information from our, uh, uh, town attorney. That regarding the legality of certain, certain questions that were posed by the council the last time. Um, and that our interpretation was accurate where, um, five percent, even if it's something under twenty, uh, twenty units. It would still count as one unit and therefore. We, uh, one unit for a, for a person that's building only a five unit, uh, housing project as opposed to a twenty-one, a twenty unit. Where they would both be, you know, assessed the same way, uh, and that it would be a disparate impact. So they're taking a look at that to sort of, um, see if they could either do a sliding scale or build in some type of discretion. So that, uh, that they can have some leeway in doing it. But they, uh, but the bottom line is that based upon, uh, the reading of the P O C D that. Some of the, uh, some of the goals that we, that were set forth in the P O C D, some of the statutory issues, uh, set forth under state law. And, uh, some of the issues regarding the regulation, they would like to sit down with us and discuss fully so that we can really sort of work out a common plan so that. Um, that we could. All be on the same page, all, and, and that we're all, you know, that it's something that works for everybody. Uh, that there was discussion. And as I did say during that, that, um, uh, during my discussion. I think that the, uh, how, the trust fund has merit, but it's just a matter of how, you know, the, uh, the devil is always in the details. And that's, uh, that's what we need to sort of hammer out at this point. Uh, other than that, that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Luba. And then for myself, there was a Tom Public Library Foundation meeting last night. Uh, they did receive probate court documents that there is in a state of, I believe, a resident by the name of Ivy Lynn Padapas who, uh. Their beneficiary under their will to, to the Public Library Foundations. I think they're waiting for additional details on that. Otherwise, they had a few grant requests from the library director regarding technology. I think one potentially of interest. Uh, to Councilman Nuccio is they had a pretty good discussion about the, um. The hotspots. So there is a potential in the future, I believe. They've said it's been pretty well used. There's usually not a. One out. So they may be considering in the future, uh, funding additional hotspots. Uh, for families to use or for, for residents and patrons to use as needed. So. Other than that, there is a Conservation Commission meeting coming up on Thursday. They have a pretty packed agenda of topics. And then the Water Commission will be meeting the following Wednesday. So that is it for me for updates for seven B. So we will move on to new business. An update from Robert L. Miller, MPHRS Director of He, Health, Eastern Highland Health Districts. I believe they are on tonight's, and I know they received a number of questions from counselors. And I believe there is also a document provided, uh, at least it might be good to have that ready to share on the screen in terms of some of the questions and data. I know, um, Rob said they'd repeat a lot of those answers orally, but it might be good to share that with the public. So Lisa, if you want to add anything else and then otherwise invite, uh, Rob to speak. I see them on camera now, so I'll just.
Rob is here. If you give me a minute, I can try and get that document up. But you guys can go ahead and begin if you. Like to just start opening up, Rob?
Sure. Um, thank you, Lisa. Uh, thank you, Chairman Jones. Um, and, uh, good evening, council members. Uh, for those in the, uh, audience who may not. Miller, I'm the Health Director for the Eastern Highlands Health District. Um, and I'm gonna spend, uh, some, uh, a little bit of time tonight, just providing an overview of, uh, Health District. Um, information and activities. And then also, uh, we'll dive into, um, the questions that, uh. Was provided the Health District, uh, prior to, uh, uh, this meeting. So with that said, I'm gonna start off with a little data. Um, the Health District puts out a weekly report. Surveillance data and other information, um, as of. Yeah, as of, uh, uh, the weekend in January first. Over the prior two-week period, uh, the total case count in the town of, uh, Tallinn was a hundred and sixty-two cases. Um, it's important to note that over that two-week period during the first week, chronologically speaking. We're just fifty-two cases in the subsequent weekend being that. This is doubled, uh, to, uh, one hundred, over doubled, uh, to a hundred and ten cases. And that pretty much epitomizes that kind of amplification of, uh, of cases in just in the talent community epitomizes what we're seeing. Uh, in all of our Health District communities, uh, Health District wide and in the state of Connecticut. Within that relatively short, uh, period of time, uh, the case counts, uh, literally doubled. Um, district. Uh, for that first week, uh, we had, uh, two hundred and seventy-eight cases. And then boom, uh, uh, subsequent seven days, we had six hundred cases, which essentially. Um, uh, significant, was significant, was by far the highest nor single, uh, case count in a single week the Health District had had. Uh, in the history, uh, since we've been tracking these numbers. And so we are in the throes of a very significant surge of cases. Then within our communities. Um, I also want to talk a little bit about, um, rates. Um, applying the DPH, uh, rate of incidents rate in a population. Um, I can tell you that for that first week during that two-week period, the incident rate for Tallinn, uh, was, uh, forty-five cases. Was forty five cases per hundred thousand. And then in the second week, it jumped up to seventy nine cases per hundred thousand and just. Active, the state of Connecticut. Town response framework puts a town in the red category. After fifteen cases per hundred thousand. So as you can see, Tallinn is significantly higher than that particular mark. Also, in the in that report, we have some positivity information positivity percentage. For that first week. Tallinn was at nine point one percent positivity. That's the percentage of persons who tested during. That week in Tallinn who tested positive. And then for that second week during that same fourteen day period. The positivity rate jumped up to fourteen point four. By comparison, it's not a direct comparison, but just to give you some perspective, the daily positivity rate today and. Was just under twenty four percent. So from that perspective. Positivity rate in Tallinn is lower, generally speaking, as compared to statewide rate. I also just want to take a moment to talk about the CDC's measure they use to. To categorize risk of transmission in community. They calculated a little bit differently. So the number. Rate. And I know that's can be a bit confusing to the public wise, CDC calculating a rate, incident rate differently in the state of Connecticut. That's unfortunately the way a professional epidemiologist operate. They work with the data they have and. They figure out the best rate they can come up with. And so CDC does it a little bit differently than the State Health Department. They they calculate the rate for Tallinn County currently as of yesterday at one thousand nineteen. Cases per hundred thousand. And that too is in their high risk category. They they identify that threshold of high risk at one hundred cases per hundred thousand. The Connecticut rate is calculated on a fourteen day rolling average. The C's rate, CDC rate is calculated on a seven day average. And I'm not going to get granular with that. Unfortunately, it's unfortunately do do it differently, but they're both measured. And they're both identifying high levels of risk in the community as we understand it now. The other thing I wanted to talk about is. Is vaccination rates. The health district continues to do weekly vaccination clinics for both adults. And pediatric pediatric doses. Fact hold to relatively large pediatric clinics at Tallinn High School. One in one in November and then one again in December in which we vaccinated approximately two hundred seven. I'm sorry, yeah, two hundred and forty kids. In your community and some of the surrounding communities and and that went off rather well. And I want to thank Dr. Willett and his team for their support. In getting those kids vaccinated. The health district for our part is vaccinated. Eighteen hundred kids, nineteen hundred kids so far, and we continue to inch up in those numbers moving forward. In terms of vaccine coverage. The town of Tallinn, for those considered fully vac vaccinated, is out seventy five percent. And that's above the state number or sorry, that's above the health district total number of seventy three percent. And and above the state of Connecticut, which is seventy percent. So can it's a town content. On that particular figure. And so and we're and we also continue to do have a homebound program in which we are going into people's homes. Who may not otherwise have easy access to vaccine. We do do have a handful of patients in the Tallinn community in which we have gone in and administered. The two series dust and also and also boosters and. Do provide that service to residents district wide for those that are in need. Moving on to contact tracing, the health district continues to provide that service. It's obviously with the with the nine with the mind numbing numbers. We're seeing it now. We just simply can't keep up. We are still every single individual still getting contacted who ends up with a positive result in the surveillance system. The. The state Connecticut. And local health continue to make telephone calls to individuals who end up in the surveillance system that are positive. For those that we can't make calls to for one reason or the other, they at least get a text from the State Health Department notifying them. That their positive result has been reported to the State Health Department and providing them a link on information that they can get. Else and those around them. We'll continue to contact tracing through this surge as best we can. So many of you have probably heard by now that the CDC has updated their guidance on isolation quarantine. Generally speaking, it was about ten days for both. Recent updated guidance from the CDC just prior to the end of the year. Down to five days for both quarantine and isolation with an additional five days of strict adherence to masking. It took a few days, but the State Health Department was able to update their guidance for both schools. And the general public to and and also just as recently as today. And updated and aligned their guidance for isolation. For 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 the for the schools and also for youth sports. So that guidance was just issued today. Let's see what else. So I know testing has been a major issue. I think we all understand that. The demand on testing far. Available testing resources, as everybody's aware, the state is implementing an initiative to get self tests out. To the population through municipalities and I commend Lisa and Chief Littell. On their efforts to get those tests and masks out to the community. Many of the municipalities when our in our district have been able to pivot and mobilize resources relatively quickly. Get those important tools out to our citizens. For our part, the health district. Continues to has we've been continuing to try to work with and in fact, do our best to pressure the state. To expand diagnostic testing services in the region. We have been working with the town of Vernon and Mike Picaro's team on standing up a new site in Vernon. The state has committed to. And I know I know Mike's been working with the new state vendor. To coordinate with logistics on that. I'm not quite sure when that new site is going to. Operationalize, but I'm hoping it's very soon. There's also going to be an additional site in Putnam. Another state site in Putnam, hopefully within a similar period of time. More information to come on that. It's more information from the talent team on the 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 testing and masking information. Health district was not directly engaged in that other than to provide information as needed. And then the health district this past this past week on January on January, January fifth. Issued a public statement. In essence. During the month of July, we're requesting in the strongest terms possible that all business and residents. Take direct steps to reduce the risk of COVID nineteen transmission. In our, you know, business homes and place of work. We're asking people to get vaccinated and if eligible, get boosted, avoid large crowds. Social distance whenever possible and stay home when you're sick and and wear a mask whenever you may be in proxim. And most importantly, be courteous to your fellow neighbor. And so we issued that statement last week. With feedback from board members and town CEOs and we've been getting some reasonably good traction in the media on it. I know the tall and patch did something. The Hartford Current did something so. We're hopeful that that continues to be a driving message through the month of January as we. To kind of manage our way through this current surge of cases. So I did receive a number of questions from councillors prior to the meeting. And I can see up on the I can see up on the screen now. You see in red, those are essentially answers. The brief answers that I put together. I did reach out to the State Health Department for some of these data requests. Now to Dr. Lynn Sosa. She's the deputy state epidemiologist for the state of Connecticut. And some of the data points. Unfortunately, are are either very challenging or just simply not available. With that said, I can I you do see some of my you do see my responses on the screen now. We did identify through the data set we do have accessible to us. A number of hospitalizations. The data set we have accessible to is a Connecticut electronic disease surveillance system. And it. You know, it's it's unfortunately not necessarily designed for the sheer numbers. That the COVID pandemic has created and for the state of Connecticut has not been able to replace this tool in the midst of the pandemic. Unfortunately. It's what we got. And. We've been it identifies one hundred and thirty one hospitalizations, but Dr. Sosa tells me that that number is likely pretty low. And not an accurate count and and this particular system is dependent on providers, licensed physicians. And and others to report this information and they're all really busy too. And so either they or some so sometimes they partially report or don't report at all. Having the system for this purpose anyway is going to be low. We just I just don't know what the actual number is. She did also tell us that in terms of hospitalization duration and some of the treatment issues that, again, that's not information. That they collected that it's that's that's even available in terms of asymptomatic again. The laboratories or in the stand up state sites, for example, which grab which grab specimens and have you. Certainly ask if you're symptomatic. And if they do, people don't always report it. And so again, we just don't have good data. On on kind of the percent of people testing positive that may be symptomatic. We do have data on if you want to scroll up a little bit so we can see that whole table, Lisa. Great. We do have information on split outs, age ranges for positive cases in the community. And so you. In this table here, age ranges for the for the health district since the beginning of the pandemic through January seventh. I know that there was interest in 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 pediatric cases. And and so you can see district wide that. In the twelve in the four to twelve range that about seven point two percent over the courses epidemic. Been pediatric cases. I do have some other numbers here that's not on that table. Bear with me here a second while I try to track them down. Yeah, here they are. So. Throughout the pandemic, again, from March two thousand twenty through January seventh, two thousand twenty two. About fifteen fifteen percent of the positive cases have been minors under. If you look at the if you look at the same number. Down below and I want to direct your attention to the lines titled January first. Through January seventh. So basically the last month or so. Again, looking at the cases under age, under eighteen years of age, that combined number is about twenty one percent. So over the last. Had, you know, what I would consider an increase in the number of pediatric cases of COVID nineteen. With the overall percentage being fifteen percent over the course of the total pandemic and over the past month, it's been it's at twenty one percent. So there is an increase. And of course, we've included tall and numbers in there too. Again, those over over the course of the entire pandemic. And you can't see just looking at the age. Four to twelve, you go down that column and you look at the age range from December first to January seventh. You look at four to seven, you can see that it's nine point six percent. For the total health district and then for that last for the last month and then for the last week, you can see it's a ten point one percent. Just below that, you compare that to the upper rates for the entire health district at seven point two percent. You can see that there. That age bracket alone, an increase in the percentage of pediatric cases. And then one of the other questions that were asked is on the number of children hospitalized and and we're not seeing. Our data at this point does not identify in any hospitalized children. But Dr. Sosa did note that there are approximately forty. Ha cases of hospitalized pediatric cases hospitalized in the state of Connecticut statewide. Lisa, you want to go ahead and continue to scroll up? Great. Thanks. So the hospitalization rate data, Dr. Sosa again said that that's really challenging data to get. There is data available for Middlesex, New Haven counties because that's predominantly where the New Haven Healthcare Center is located and their system. Does track does does a reasonably good job of tracking. Hospitalization rates in those counties. In Tallinn County in particular is not a data readily available. At least from the state of Connecticut and. This and trying to get data directly from the hospitals is really, really hard. In terms of deaths for for Connecticut for month of November, there were one hundred and forty. In December, there are two hundred sixty five comparison to the health district for November. There are two in December. There are five. So. Think we did have, in fact, what is considered an increase in the number of deaths from November to December. Omnicron has certainly been the dominant, has become the dominant variant affecting. Our communities and the state of Connecticut. I don't have statewide numbers, but Yale currently, but. But Yale system did report out that of, you know. They're doing the community testing they're doing in New Haven County that ninety five percent of it. Is the Omnicron variant based on the surveillance they're conducting. Well, you could see some of my other comments here. I think in terms of ongoing policies and ongoing policies to mitigate risk, health district is very much supporting. Said our communities can engage into mitigate risks in the communities, especially now during this current search. We're seeing numbers we've never seen before. I think it's certainly noteworthy and I think widely understood that this particular variant. Generally, generally is is mild to most individuals in terms of symptomatology who are infected. The challenge is which is the sheer numbers. You're gonna. You're still seeing a an increase in. In hospitalizations as a result of that, just because of the sheer numbers. And you're also seeing an increase in 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 mortality. Although we're not seeing the mortality rates we saw last winter. And that is certainly in large part, I think, due to vaccination coverage in the community. And I think individuals also under. Stand what they can do to protect themselves. And then finally. Certainly could be potentially linked to the less severe index of this particular variant, but just still the sheer numbers are still pushing hospitals. To points that they find extremely challenging. I I and I would not want to be or nor would I want any of my. Family members in a hospital in Connecticut. Right. They're definitely challenged. In terms of this next series of questions from councillor Mnuchio asked about a number of them asked about school information. The health district didn't really collect. This information, not. The health district didn't really collect this information, not in any consistent way. It's, it's, it would be very challenging to acquire. I can't speak to whether the school district or Dr. Willett. I can't tell you that that I have seen some studies out there which, which indicate that the conversion rate of, of kids who are identified as close contacts in school setting is pretty low, under 50, under 5%. And I think that the state health department, the state department of education recognized that and, and in part as a result of that associated school setting was part of the driver behind recent updated guidance to schools. In addition to aligning with the CDC's guidance to reduce the period of time for isolation quarantine. The DPH and SD also recommended that schools discontinue contact tracing for school settings and, and Dr. Woollett about this since this new guidance came on board and, and my understanding is that, that they're essentially following it. And as a result, as a result, I mean, this guidance was largely put in place, was updated in a, in a strong effort to keep kids in school. I think certainly governors has, has been communicating this message many times. And so have the Commissioner of Health and the Commissioner of Education and their strong objective here is to keep kids in in-person learning as much as possible. And finally, the, there is a question regarding masking indoors in, in the town hall. I think, yeah, I think, you know, again, pointing back to health district statement regard regarding actions to try to mitigate risk. Certainly we're in a surge now and I think it's important for individuals indoors to mask regardless of their vaccination status, status when you're in a public setting. The CDC made that recommendation some time ago. And the health district models its recommendation after the CDC's, which essentially that particular recommend communities are either, counties are either at a substantial or high level risk transmission category. And the health districts, and that's been the health district's recommendation for a number of months now. And that will be continued to be kind of the threshold standard we use for those particular types of, of recommendations. And then, then finally, a couple more questions. Unfortunately, while there is information kind of statewide in terms of the total number of people who test positive or vaccinated. Dr. Sosa indicated that that data is not necess, not currently available at the town or county level. They're working on it. You know, I hope that to get that information sometime. And when we do, we'll, we'll, we'll try to start reporting that information out too. The challenge here is this state has to manipulate to acquire that information. One is, one is the surveillance data from CT Ed's Connecticut Electronic Disease Surveillance System data set, which records all these positive cases and they have to reconcile that against what's called CT Wiz, which is another data set, which is a record of everybody's immunization, which is a record of everybody's immunization status in state of Connecticut. So they need to reconcile in those two data sets to come up with those percentages. And they've been doing it for the state, but they haven't yet been doing it at the county level. And then finally, they do have, you know, data on the hospitalized vaccinated versus unvaccinated. And right now, 68.1% of those hospitalized are unvaccinated. And, and I think these are important figures here in understanding how important vaccination really as a tool to combat, to combat this pandemic. You know, the unvaccinated are at 3.3 times greater risk of testing positive and 7.17.2 times greater risk of dying from that infection. So vaccine is an extremely important method to protect yourself, your family and, and your community. And so with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Hear any comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I, I don't have any questions at this time. I just wanted to thank you for your very thorough update to the community. And I did want to give a quick kudos to our CERT team. I think I see our coordinator on for CERT Jim Toomey, who has been top notch in terms of working with our volunteers on that team for the testing throughout the pandemic and even the most recent mask. I think we're hopefully expecting in the coming days, another round of kits and masks to be distributed to residents. So I would just encourage members of the public that are on for that reason or are curious to keep their eyes and ears posted for that information. With that being said, just going in order of my list, I think Councilman Udacheck followed by Councilman Nuccio and Counselor Luba have their hands raised.
Thank you, Rob, for all the information and all the questions that counselors sent in. They're also great questions as well. Just a few and some are just a generalized thing I'm going to say. So how accurate are the home tests?
Well, so they're not the gold standard that the PCR, PCR test is. Tool and if used properly, they can provide important information to, to families. It depends on the specific brand of test. You know, I think in terms of, terms of effectiveness of identifying or the sensitivity of identifying a positive, a positive, you know, making a positive result, it ranges anywhere from like 95 to depending on the brand of, of making a positive result if you follow the instructions properly in the box that's provided. So if, if you have a self-test and it's hard to get to a brick and mortar location or one of the state sponsored and you have reason to use it, either because you're symptomatic or because you've identified as a close contact or because you're about to visit a vulnerable then you should, you should absolutely use it.
I know there's some scams out there, at least you hear. So I think the CDC, right, has a list of ones that are the better ones to trust.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not privy to the details of that, but I do know that the key terminology that you want to see on any label on a home test is EUA Youth Authorization by the FDA. That will be on the label somewhere. If that doesn't exist, okay, then I would question the validity and the authenticity of that test.
I'm sorry, I missed the U.
Yeah, Emergency Use Authorization by the FDA.
And then, I mean, I, I work in healthcare and we're seeing it rapidly run through those in the outpatient. So everybody's working really hard and starting to get burnt out. So I don't, it's the state start, no, help the hospitals because soon we're going to have probably less healthcare workers as patients start coming in or even just all the tested and urgent years, right? Because they're going to sick. So sometimes they have to close down because they don't have.
Yeah, I think, I think I read the governor was talking about calling up some National Guardsmen to assist with some of the hospitals.
Answered one of them earlier and I don't know Chair Jones, if this is more of a question for the superintendent. I know, I don't know if he'll be able to answer over it or I've just heard recently that it's definitely running rampant in the high school right now. If that's true or that's the students that's saying that, because I know I've heard that half the school is out. So I don't know. Is that, I don't know Steve if he can answer that or?
Well, I might, I might, Dr. Will, I think they were, they're finishing a bike to eat. So, so I might give them a, if they're, if they're okay to respond.
Well, I don't want to turn it into an ASMR thing, you know.
I caught you. I did it on purpose.
No, I'm just, I'm just kidding. Of course. Well, no, you know, we, we whimsically call this the Delta, the Delta Cron winter because between Delta and Omicron, you know, we have kind of this cross section of things going on. But we do publish the, the COVID identifications on the site so people can see, you know, which grades they're falling in. And, you know, we are starting from the beginning of January there when we transitioned away from contact tracing directly. So, you know, looking at that, for instance, you can kind of get a sense that, you know, while the high schools impacted, it's, it's not any more pervasive there than it is anywhere else in the district right now. You know, the, the older kids do tend to interact more and in a more sophisticated ways, you know, because they're engaged in you know, more sports, more clubs, more college related type stuff, more activities. So that, that is going to, they're just going to be more out there. So we can expect that to be a little bit higher on their end, but it's not so, so massively different than the rest. When you look at the data sets that we're putting out there. So.
Okay. And then, I mean, I don't know about staff, like is there plan if staff start, I'm like in healthcare, right? It's starting to go through healthcare. So I would imagine eventually they'll hit educators, teachers, administrators, parents.
We're permanently on Plan B, you know, in perpetuity. It's just really making adjustments and we expect it to do that, you know, we, we are experienced in, in this now. It's, it's not like it, you know, it's Omicron is, is definitely more contagious. But the mitigations and the processes we've been using, we've been doing now for two years. So, you know, we are going to keep kids in school. It is the best place for them. We're going to keep in-person learning going. And, you know, it is going to be hard and it does require some sacrifices and some adjustments. But Omicron, you know, has, you know, seen a peak in a trough in other. You know, we, we're hoping that we're going to see that here and we're just going through a little bit of the storm now. But the staff is dedicated. They're a great group of people. All of the staff, you know, the custodians, the parish, the secretaries, the teachers, they're all administrators doing an amazing job. We're going to, we're going to keep the kids in school and everything's going to, you know, going to be good. So.
I think that's all I have. I, I do. I appreciate everyone here that answered these questions. I know that you are working extremely hard and I know speaking to teachers, I'd rather be in school as well. Best place for them to be. So thank you for answering those questions.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Udacheck. So we'll go to Councilman Nuccio, followed by Counselor Luba and then Counselor Khan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Hi, Rob. How you doing?
Good, Councilman Nuccio.
Good. How are you?
Good, good.
So I wanted to kind of go over some of the questions that I had and it specifically is around, you know, the, the issue of making sure we're, we're doing everything that we can to keep kids in school. And so you said a couple of things that I thought were really interesting and I'd like to get a little bit more information on if you don't mind. One of them, you know, the recent guidance you said changed because less than 5% of kids was it are, are contracting it at school? And then you mentioned a change around the guidance for school isolation and sports. I was wondering if you could give us some, what exactly that guidance is now?
So to your, to your first question, that 5%, it was a number I've, you know, I've read in some studies that are not DPH based, just around the country. And so I can get you the citations if you want. But the, but the school, hey, the, the DPH and just yesterday, the C I A C issued updated winter sports guidance. And essentially it like, like the CDC and the, the CDC and school guidance, guidance for the general population. It stipulates or recommends five days isolation for a positive case. And then a subsequent five day adherence to masking. And then for identified close contacts, those positive cases, five days of quarantine and then a subsequent five days of a strict adherence to masking. The one distinction in the youth sports in the youth sports, and of course, the quarantine piece does not apply to kids that are fully vaccinated. The one distinction in youth sports guidance, it's a bit the school, school guidance is as it pertains to kids that are unvaccinated that, the kids that are unvaccinated that are in quarantine for the first five days. Condition of being able to go back to sports is their ability to wear the mask while they're doing the sport. And you can do that in basketball, you can do that in volleyball, but for masking is a safety hazard while engaging in the sport, then they can't engage in that sport if they can't mask. Wrestling is an example of that. And so, so that's, I think, an important distinction to point out that if, if the sport requires them because of safety reasons to take the mask off, then they're going to have to go, then there'll be, the recommendation is they not engage in the sport for the full 10 days.
Okay. And for kids vaccinated, are they, do they have to wear a mask at all times?
Yeah, for the kids who are vaccinated, they do have to wear a mask for the full 10 day period while engaged in sport, which is the case now. That's, that's really nothing new. There was a period in time when unvaccinated, excuse me, when vaccinated kids didn't have to wear masks during competitions, but recently the Commissioner of Health revised that dated order requiring that all kids wear masks regardless of vaccination status during competitive sports.
So during sports, regardless of vaccination status, they have to wear a mask?
That's correct.
All right. So then it's not, whether or not they're exposed, doesn't really matter because they have to wear the mask anyway, right?
Yep. No, that's correct. That's correct. But the, the, the stipulation that you wear that mask for the subsequent five days is an important because there is residual risk. I mean, we've shortened the isolation, we've shortened the quarantine period. I mean, we, everybody understands there's a potential, although the risk is low, the CDC has determined the risk is low. There's still a potential that somebody could be infectious after that five days. So wearing the mask is, is an essential component of the 10-day quarantine process, even though you may not, even though you'll be able to five, to mitigate that residual risk.
Okay. And did I hear you correctly when you said that says no more contact tracing in the school, that they're not doing any kind of contact tracing?
Well, that's, that's the recommendation by the state health department and the Department of Education. I know that some schools are still doing it, but in, but in my conversations with Dr. Will, let me just mention a moment ago, they are not.
Okay. And quickly, I wanted to ask, sorry, hold on, my little typing thing is not, is not working for me right now. Just a couple other in general guidance questions. So I, I just want to confirm, you know, there's been a lot of back and forth and I think this was pretty much established by the CDC a while ago that COVID doesn't live and thrive on surfaces, that, you know, you don't have to about it as much as, you know, touching everything and that wash your hands, but it's not, it's not residing on surfaces. Is that still the overall guidance?
Essentially, yes. That I don't, but I don't want that to, I don't want to lose the importance of routine cleaning disinfection.
Oh, no, I agree. I agree. And washing your hands.
Absolutely. Yep.
Because we have to still say that. We're three years into this and I still touch my face. I can't stop it. That's going to be like a lifelong thing. And then the only other thing that I have is regarding around same sort of thing. I know I've read this. And then the only other thing that I have is regarding around, same sort of thing, I know I've read this plenty of different places, but I want to make sure I get it. COVID doesn't linger in the air for 10, 12 hours kind of a thing. It's a droplet based virus. So, you know, it's not, if you're in an office or a room, you know, COVID are 12 hours later because you walked by with it on, with it, correct?
That's essentially correct. Yeah, that's, that's still the mainstream guidance from the CDC and, and the scientific community. I know that there have been some case studies out there of specific outbreaks in which, say, in confined, confined, close quarter indoor spaces with lots of all at the same time, that it does become potential for aeroization, aero, for it to become aero, SARS. Thank you so much, under those conditions. And so there are, so, and I, and I suspect that there's going to be many studies to come on the actual mechanism for transmission of, of this virus for, for years to come. But right now, that remains the basic understanding of transmission mechanics for this virus.
Okay, so if you're in a room when you have masks on for a meeting and that, and you leave, like you don't have to worry about it lingering there till the next morning or something. All right, so then the, the only other question that I have here that I had, oh boy, it was here and then it went away and I'm hoping that it comes back within the next like two seconds. Let me just, the question that I had regarding masking in town hall, is this something, I guess where I'm going with this is, as we look forward, right now, what you basically said in your response back was because we're in a high risk environment or high risk time right now, that, you know, we should obviously continue with masking indoors because we're at high, high transmission. As that goes down, is it, is it a moderate, we would say, like, what, what can we expect moving forward as a public with a, with a very high vaccination rate that we have in Tallinn to eventually see some sort of semblance of not masking, like right now, the in-town hall or in other areas, what should we be looking for as our, as our signs?
Well, I think kind of the primary measure, as I've said, seen is the CDC's measure for risk transmission risk in the county. And so then, once you get under 50 cases per 100,000, that's the threshold. So if you, if you're looking for a specific number, that's not to say some of those other factors won't be considered that you aptly pointed out, and that is in terms of vaccination coverage in the population, percentage of vulnerable population, percentage of vulnerable individuals in the population. He's in, there's, there, there are other factors out there that may merit consideration. But in my mind, right now, based on my understanding of this virus, that's, I think, an important indicator.
I appreciate that. And then can you just do a quick conversion for like a town like Tallinn, we have 15,000 people, right? So we're nowhere near the 100,000. So what does that case count specifically for, for a town like Tallinn?
Well, I think it's not a count, it's an incidence rate. And the way a rate is calculated is it's the number of cases divided by the time period that that rate is covering. So in the state of Connecticut, it's a 14 day period. And then you divide that by the population of the community and then you multiply that by 100,000 to get the rate. And I can send you the formula, but that's how the state of Connecticut calculates, calculates. The CDC does it slightly different. This is a seven day average. I'd have to look in their footnotes to see what their specific formula is, but I can get that for you too, if you'd like.
That's not necessarily, I just wanted to have it out there because I've had people say that, you know, we're not 100,000, we're never going to be 100,000.
That's not the point.
I understand, right? Which is why I typically explain how those rates were derived because I explain it and it, it's gonna come from you now. That's all that I have. Thank you very much, Rob, for coming in for answering every question. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio. So I do have next on our list, Counselor Luba, followed by Counselor Khan and Councilwoman Murray. Not trying to restrict anyone's questioning, there was a request from the Miracle Field and we had our joint meeting and I communicated it to the Vice Chair. Be up next for our agenda item. And there was kind of a hope or an expectation we might be able to get to them around eight, between 8:30 and 9 o'clock. And I'm seeing it's almost nine, so just want to be mindful of that, but I also don't want to curtail any questions. So just with that being said, Counselor Luba, followed by Counselor Khan and then Counselor Lynn Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Rob. How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
Just want to say, starting out my line of questions, of course, we all are encouraging people to get vaccinated if you can. Mask up if you feel it's necessary, take whatever steps you need to take care of yourself. Now that we've got that said, you know, I appreciate the, the answers that you've provided. I'm not going to go over all of them just because you've given a written answer. But the one thing that is recurring is that a lot of the questions came back where we're not tracking this data. And this is, I put it, I mean, almost appropriately, we're two years in. I mean, come March, we are two years into this. The, and I know from talking to other people at the CCMO, the Connecticut Council of Municipal Officers and chat rooms and discussion groups that I've had with people, I'm not the only one asking these questions. I mean, everybody's, everyone's asking across the state the same questions as far as, you know, what the numbers are. But we're not tracking it and that's a little frustrating here. And I think that my main concern here is that everyone's like, you know, we're, you know, I myself and a few other people are being criticized because we're asking these questions. We're not just listening to the experts, but if the experts can't provide us this information, that's, that's something that makes it a little bit difficult for us to come up with cohesive policies. I think that the, the one thing that, that my biggest concern is that if there seems to be a recurring conflation between positivity rate, death, hospitalization and other numbers, where we're talking about sole numbers of, of rates. And just as I said last time we had this discussion, the more people that test, the more likely you're going to get higher numbers for testing positive. But that doesn't mean that you're having more people hospitalized. That I think that one of the issues that I had and one of the questions I continue to have is people are talking about hospitalization rate. But I think that, you know, the Director of CDC came up with a wonderful question last week. The issue is we can't look at hospitalizations and COVID, is it hospitalization because of COVID or with COVID? And I think that the more that you're seeing some of these people coming in for elective surgeries that are getting these blood tests, that that's a natural process. Am I, am I wrong on that?
No, I, I think, I think that that's a valid point. My understanding and Dr. Sosa, in my conversation with her in response my request on, on, on your behalf, was that she had not acknowledged that the, that the hospitalized COVID case numbers are hospitalized, not only hospitalized due to COVID, but also hospitalized with COVID. And so those numbers do, are included in that total number and they are characterized like that.
Okay, and then the other thing is with regard to hospitalization is how many of those are going to the ER to be, to use them as a PCP when, and that's, so they're being admitted to the hospital, but then turned and released. That's one of the questions I asked. And again, that was where the statement that was provided to you was, that's not data that's tracked.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't have it, I wish I had a better answer for you on that one. Yeah, I, it's, you know, I think it would certainly provide some insights, I think, as to the of, of characteristics, particularly with, particularly as it pertains to specific variants, Delta versus Omicron, things of that nature.
And again, when, when I'm asking these questions, they're like, you know, making, you know, just sort of complaining about this stuff, it's not directed to you. I hope you know that. I know that, you know, we've been working together since the beginning of this whole thing. I know that you would always provide the answers that you can. It's just a frustration where this is two years in and we don't have these information. This is something people need to know is, you know, that we're hearing these huge numbers of positive. We're hearing the hospitals are being overwhelmed, but when you talk to people in the hospital, like I've talked to doctors and treating physicians over at Hartford Hospital and the Hartford Healthcare System, so that includes Wyndham, includes Manchester, includes a large part of the region. Talked to people down in New Haven, as well as, you know, St. Francis Hospital, that they're like, yes, ERs to come in and get tested, that, and that's what they're coming in because they have a flu-like symptom. They come, they have to admit them, but then they release them. So when you're hearing that the hospital are being overwhelmed, I think that's also a little bit of misleading on the issue because we don't have that raw data as far as how many are basically catch and release. You go, you get treated, you get sent home. And I mean, just from the numbers that you provided, that out of Eastern Highland Health Districts, you're talking to tents, municipalities that are covered this region, 131 people have been hospitalized over two years. For, and that's just testing positive for COVID. That's not saying because of COVID, but testing positive with COVID. Is that about accurate?
Well, I would say that on that particular point, you know, I alluded to that in my, in my presentation is that we are unfortunately questioning the accuracy of that particular number. And the reason for that, and briefly, is that, is that the, is that the, the system we're using is heavily reliant on providers reporting the information to the State of Health Department so they can put it into the system. And it's often not getting reported at the level of detail necessary for the information in the system to be accurate. And so I don't know how low that number is. I just know, I just know that it's low and I know that it's low because that providers, and often because they're busy, just aren't filling out the information that they're obligated to. And that's, that's been particularly the case during this pandemic since they're quite busy. And, and so at some level, you know, I think the State Health Department kind of has an obligation to kind of remind providers, you know, we're asking you this information, you need to provide it. And this unfortunately isn't just specific to COVID. Under the current mandatory reportable data system in the state of Connecticut, there's actually laws, regulations requiring providers to provide this information. These regulations have been in place for decades for a full list of mandatory reportable diseases. Even before the pandemic, I was having to go, I was having to go to Manchester Hospital and other providers because I wasn't getting the information from them that they're obligated to provide me. So unfortunately, this isn't anything new.
Yeah, but on the, on the flip side of that as well, though, you could have people that are, again, being reported as positive because they're at the hospital with COVID, not because of COVID. So, I mean.
That's correct.
So I guess, I mean, and again, I, I'm, Mr. Chair, I promise I'm going to wrap it up right now because I know that we want to try and move on. All the only numbers that we actually, that we are actually getting, that we can verify is the number of people that are testing positive, the, the number of hospitalizations. But as far as the character and quality of the hospitalizations, we, that we don't know, that that's something that's not tracked and not available.
Well, I guess what I would say is certainly the instinct is to think about very empirically as terms, for lack of a better term, black and white, these are numbers you can look at. But I think an important term to keep in mind as you're looking at this data is that they are indications of risk in the community, they're not hardcore facts. For example, the case count, you know, we had 600 cases in one week last week. That's an indication of, that's a number of cases we have in the community. There's likely three or four more additional cases for every one that we had. And so it's an indication of, of risk and counts in the community, just like the number of hospitalizations. Now, that's a firmer number, I would agree, and should be a firmer number because hospitals should be reporting that data to the State Health Department. And unfortunately, they're not reporting, as you've aptly pointed out, I think, all the data necessary to kind of give us a clear picture of the severity of this particular disease and, and particular variants.
Right, but again, going back to the point that you made before, that's positive results. You're talking just positive, like within the community. So it may be threefold or fourfold of what we're actually getting.
That's right.
But that's just positive. That's, and those people are still out in the community, just like any other thing, like, you know, I, I'm not using this guy, I know this example, but the flu, you know, right now, that even, even the CDC Director and other health experts are saying that if you're vaccinated, this is essentially the same type of thing as the flu. But we're getting, you know, I'll just, I'm sorry, I'll just end it at that, I mean, because I don't want to get it off, that'll bring us on a whole other boondoggle. But it's, I mean, that's my point, is that we're getting positive results, but that there's no correlation or showing causation between the number that you're getting, the number of hospitalizations, what the quality of the hospitalizations are, what, what, anything else. It's just saying we have X number positive and that's been a goalpost that's been moving all the way along. Where before we started out at numbers of deaths, then it ended up being numbers of hospitalizations, now it's just numbers of positives and, and that's.
I think we can, I think we can both agree, though, that, that, that SARS-CoV-2 is, is more deadly than seasonal. Because, yeah, because we've certainly had many more cases on an annual basis of COVID-2 than, than we have, have had a seasonal influenza.
Yeah, but at some point, we have to start looking at moving beyond. I mean, I think that, that's, we're trying to figure that out and that's.
I think we're all looking for kind of what the new normal is going to be like.
I'm not looking for the new normal, I'm looking for the old.
For the old normal, sure.
The old normal, that's I think we're all trying to get back. But anyway, thank you, Rob, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anything else, I'll follow up through, through Lisa and I'll take care of it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Luba, Counselor Khan, followed by Councilman Murray.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay, I believe Tammy covered up my question, the only one question I have, that how come you guys did not imply making mandatory masks into local businesses, small businesses? Because everybody is kind of confused, should I wear a mask, should I not, should I, am I allowed or not? It's not, if you can do it in town hall and everybody else, so like it should be in, because those are the same people going into the gas station or pizza liquor store, going into town hall. So it's like, there should be one.
Well, I would agree, it would be easier for the public if, if there's kind of uniform policies across broader regions than what we currently have in place. In terms of a, the practical reality is that the governor's executive order provides to municipalities to create mask mandates within their jurisdiction, not, not the local health department. So there's that, so there's that practical reality. Now, we can recommend and we have that all persons, you know, wear masks indoors and public settings regardless of their vaccine status. And so that recommendation's in place and has been for some time. It's up to the municipalities to decide individually whether or not they want to impose a mask mandate. And I can tell you that at least one, that there has been one in, in the health district, the town of Mansfield, which did that this past summer and it's, and it's in place today.
Is it, is it, who can, who can do the policy, is it the town, is it you that can make a policy that, you know what? I do have a small business, or should I wear a mask or should that, should not? My only thought is like, you know what, it's your, it's your decision, if you want to do it, that's fine.
So the, so the same executive order gives the authority to a local business order to promote, to create such a policy within his, within his or her business environment.
But if, if I do it, if one is doing it, the second one is not doing it, that means
Yes.
You're, you're creating an argument that, and you know what, why you're doing. You're, you're creating an argument that, and you know what, why you're doing it? How come you're doing it? So there's a
Yep. Yep.
That's in the past too, that a lot of argument, a lot of fighting is I do not want to get into it. If there's a policy, everybody is following it. If there's no policy, you know what? I can really, you don't have to, I'm just, how would I vaccinated or you are not vaccinated? Thank you.
No problem, I, I just want to, I want to sympathize with your, with your parent frustration on that particular issue. I agree. You know, as a small business person, I can only imagine the challenges that they must confront if they choose to impose such a policy on their customers and some of the, with some of the expressions that they may get from their customer base. It is inconsistent from business to business and from town to town, which creates even more frustration among residents and citizens of those communities. And that is why, in part, many regions of the state, capital region in particular, and I think, think the southeast region also has asked the state, the governor formally to issue a statewide mask mandate that would many of the issues, Counselor Khan, that you so aptly pointed out.
I believe that the state do it, I think there would be, even though if you you can, if you can do it on a smaller level and set up example, maybe the other towns are maybe would start thinking about it because it's like the cases is still out there.
Yes, they are.
All right. Thank you for your time, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Khan, Councilman Murray. Councilman Murray.
Thank you, I, I really just have one question, although it's not probably an easy one. You mentioned that you get right now. And I'm wondering what advice or guidance you can give us if we need to get tested for any variety of reason. And it, you know, the next available appointment is in 12 days or something like that. That doesn't seem sufficient, so what can we do?
Yeah, yeah, that's an excellent question. My, my sense, since from the last time I looked online to try to procure kind of an appointment, it, it was days before I could find something. There are a number of resources out there. But even with the laundry list of resources, I mean, if you look on the health district website, we've, which for your watching audiences at E H H D dot org is a, is a pretty reasonable list of all the testing resources in our region of the state. And gives reasonable information for each. And you could go through that list and probably find something, but that takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of time. So I, all I can offer to remain diligent and vigilant in your efforts to find an appointment or go to a state site, find the schedule of the state-sponsored sky sites, go as early as possible to ensure that you get your test. That means maybe at least an hour before the state testing site is scheduled to open. I know that there was a period of time when the vendor, when the lab that the state vendor staffing those sites was rationing tests for those sites because their lab was at capacity. My understanding is that that lab, which is Semaphore, has caught up more or less. And so they're not rationing as much, but still nonetheless, it's a matter of just being vigilant, going through the list, checking all the websites, showing discern, identified for the state website, state sponsored sites, driving to them if you need to and getting there as early as possible. Unfortunately, that's the best advice I can get. The other, actually, the one other tactic that I would suggest is, you know, I've noticed through my, my family and friends that, you know, if you just pop into a pharmacy, you know, you might get lucky and be able to purchase a couple of home test kits. You know, if you you just pop in. And many, anecdotally, I'm aware of many people that have been able to just happen to get a couple of tests that way because the pharmacy just, pharmacy just happened to restock on that day. And because they don't tell anybody when they're restocking. So again, that's just a tactic and also requires some diligence to try to procure a test.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Murray. Nuccio for a second time.
Thank you, Katie, just so you know, and Rob, in case you want to update your stuff, you go to 211ct.org, put in our zip code. You can put in qualifiers, you can advance filter it and put in no appointment necessary. Within 25 miles, 10 sites come up. Some of them have every single day testing, including one in Hartford that I would go to frequently with my daughter when she needed testing for the academy. And Monday through Sunday and hours throughout the day, some late, going up to seven o'clock and every day on the weekend. There are 10 sites within 25 miles of town and some of them even closer that have no appointment needed testing. So I would highly suggest looking at the 211ct.org and using those limits. And then you can always find a site.
Yeah, that, that links on our, our website.
Great, thank you, Councilman Nuccio, Councilman Utecheck for a second time.
I have one last question. What to say to the people that don't think masks work?
Well, I think the science is pretty solid on a mask, which is tight-fitting and worn properly in terms of source protection. Masks to prevent and protect those around you. While there is some protection of those who are wearing the mask, it's primarily to protect those because as we, everybody understands by now, asymptomatic transmission spread is a significant challenge and one of the reasons why it is so hard to prevent spread in the community. And so you could be, you could be shedding the virus and have no idea. Mask, then you're protecting your, you're protecting your family and your community.
All right.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Utecheck. So, Rob, thank you for your time, you know. We appreciate whenever you're able to come here. We certainly make the most of you when you were able to attend, so. But if there are any further questions from counselors, feel free to relay them through Lisa to, to Rob to get as needed. And I do hope that, you know, Lisa, that you and Rob in the health district will continue to maintain communication regarding testing, vaccination, and any guidance on taking appropriate measures to protect our community from COVID as well as others. With that being said, there was no action for this item. But as previously mentioned, there was a desire to move up item 9.1 to follow new business item 8.2. Familiarness, and I believe there was some, some individuals from the miracle field that had a limited time this evening to be on. So if there's no objection, I would entertain a motion to move 9.1 up to proceed 8.1.
This is Katie Murray, so moved.
Lou Luba, second.
The move by Councilman Murray, second by Counselor Luba. Seeing no further discussion, I'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Regan. Councilman Utecheck.
Hi.
Councilman Murray.
Hi.
Councilman Nuccio.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
And Counselor Khan.
Hi.
And I'm, I said it's unanimous, so we are moving, jumping the agenda a little bit to item 9.1. And so just pulling that up, that is for the town, town council to consider a resolution to authorize an engineering study to be conducted ones for the possible miracle field project implementation. This study would be funded in full by the miracle league and the funds will be deposited into the town prior of the study. With that being said, Lisa, if you want to write a high-level summary, and then can either invite the miracle field to provide additional insight based on the information provided in the packet, and then open questions to counselors.
Okay. This particular project we're going on since early, well, actually, a couple of years since it's been in the making. However, council first heard about it on May 24th, 2021, and there was a discussion at that point in time to develop this miracle field on the Birch Grove property. At that time, the the Birch Grove School had not been completed. The, the goal there was to try to use the area prior to the contractor putting it back to the way it was. The town council felt that they wanted to wait until the project was completed prior to moving forward with the, the discussion on the miracle field. So there were a couple of meetings, the next meeting, June 8th. It was discussed that there probably should be some study where we could look at either the the Birch Grove field or possibly elsewhere within the community. Now, this evening, I also, and I'm, I think he may still be here, I have our town engineer available in case there's questions regarding looking at other areas or anything like that, if that is where the council wants to go with this for, to, to conduct an engineering study. That, the, the other concern was if the field was going to be adequate for the needs of the miracle field itself. So there was that part of the study. The study, depending on which, how, what it includes going forward is, could be between $2,500 and $12,000. My is that the miracle league has been raising funds and in order to move forward with some disorder of study, if that's what the council still require, desires, then we would need to have the funds put in place prior to any study being init, implemented. And the funds would need to come from the miracle the miracle league to. So this evening, we also have Mr. and Mrs. Lebovitz here and several other individuals from the miracle league. And I will open it up to them if they would like to proceed. Maybe Mr. and Mrs. Lebovitz first.
Yes, it would be fun.
Everyone can hear me?
Yes, you can, thank you.
Okay, I just want to introduce the advert tonight, and I do want to thank them for their patience. You know, we tried to get an estimate of time, and I know Steve, you tried to keep to it. Some of them are, you know, professionals that are doing this, generating their time to this. We have Mike Mashad, who's the head of Miracle League Connecticut. And Mike Byam, who's a co-chairman. Todd Penny, who's, who's the consulting engineer of the project. We have Stephanie Davis from Miracle League National headquartered in Georgia. And we have A.J. Roblau, ATUR, if any questions are on ATUR about, about, about the surface we're, we're going to put there. In addition, as, as part of our study beyond the ATUR, Lisa, if you want to scroll down, there's sort of a site plan that was done very recently now that the Birch Grove project's completed. I don't know if Lisa, you can scroll down, scroll down, and it's, I think it's beyond the Yeah, a little farther. Little farther. Keep going, keep going. Yes, beyond the ATUR presentation. There you go. So this is a very recent drawing of what we anticipate would be at Birch Grove. As you can see, there's a large green space, 55 yards by 85 yards. Some of the information that the miracle field is totally displacing other programs in town is not entirely correct. Basically, there's enough room, 55 to 85 yards, to put three U8 soccer fields there. Part of the presentation showed at one point, there were four U8 soccer fields. So the miracle field will not be totally displacing, taking offline hardship to other programs in town, and that's something we didn't want to do. In addition, because of the Birch Grove project, these fields have not been used for three years. And the local teams have been able to make use, you know, for these three years of having their programs working, everything else. So, you know, the, the main reason we wanted this site, and I do want to ask, you know, my consulting engineer, maybe Katie Murray was part of the Birch Grove Building Committee, was the infra, you know, with the infrastructure in place was the reason we wanted to Birch Grove land. It will save us between $100 and $150,000 for this project by putting it here based on the subbase that was left when the turf field or the grass was restored. The subbase was left, my understanding is they put down some topsoil and they planted some grass. So I don't know, Todd, if, I know Todd did walk the field with Katie and the construction company, if you want to pipe in.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So Todd Penny, for the record, Chair Jones in the council, I am a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut, have been since, for 20 years, I've been in the engineering field for I serve as your neighbor, the town of Coventry's town engineer. So a lot of site experience, and I've been working with the Lebos and the other people involved in the miracle field proposal for over a couple of years here. And there were other sites that we looked at, Birch Grove being the most primary site buildability standpoint. So Steve references the portable site, which that plan that I put together is the remaining loop road, which is now quote-unquote the track for the, for the kids at the Birch Grove. There is a fence that surrounds the interior perimeter. So that interior perimeter was the base or the home site of the portable classrooms that Birch Grove used during the construction of the new structure. That had a gravel base on it that was suitable for the field. They were removing a certain depth of that gravel to put in the topsoil. I don't have any test pit information to know how much gravel was left. So that is, that remains to be seen as to whether or not the savings that we had is still fully there. I expect it to be more, you know, a portion of that gravel to be there based on the conversations that we had after, during a couple of the site meetings. So to, to clarify, Steve, we don't quite know yet because we don't know exactly how much of the gravel was hauled off and how much of the topsoil was brought in. Those
Just to take a step back, for those that aren't aware, there is a certain amount of subbase that had to go underneath our was the same sort of subbase that had to go underneath the portables. So that was what we were looking at.
Yes, and so what we don't know is how much of that was left and versus how much was hauled off site and the topsoil brought in. We don't know that specification. I was not able to get from anybody from the town in terms of knowing how much material had to get removed. Oh, the remaining topsoil layer is level with the track. Is level with the track. So anecdotally, you know, without doing any test pits. Um, the level of the gravel is, was the same level of the loop road. Um, plus or minus, so there has to have been some material hauled off, but certainly there was a depth. There that would accommodate a poor. Wouldn't need, so, uh, the full value of what we were looking at in terms of saving. Has been lost. Because now there's topsoil there and now we would have to remove that topsoil and, and supplement accordingly. So. But I mean, we looked at, uh, we looked at cross farms. We, we looked at Crandall, the two sites at Crandall, the current ball field that. The, uh, challenger baseball uses, um, in, in front lower Crandall, then we looked in the. Uh, multi-purpose baseball and soccer fields in the upper Crandall in the back. So, um. And we, we did look at all of that information. And again, we. Kind of stuck in on this because of the pros of the costs, the pros of. The multi-use in the, uh. Of students. And, you know, certainly we're not displacing all of. That remaining field, uh, uh, and we could take a little bit. Uh, away from this if we didn't need to put soccer there. Um, that field would get a little bit smaller. Uh, and adjust our costs a little bit smaller as well.
Thank you, Todd. Um, AJ, would you like to, um, talk a little bit about the A turf, AJ Roblowski? Cause I know there, there is a little bit of a stigma regarding the, um, high school football field.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, and this is a different turf and a different.
Right, right. So, um, so generally speaking with, well, really all sports, uh. In sports fields like, uh, football fields for high schools and things like that. The systems are much longer pile height, so the blades of, uh, fiber are, you know. Two and a half inches or more, um, and then they're, they're infilled with, um. A rubber or a sand to create the, uh, the cushioning that's needed for the, you know, to, for protective. Uh, to be protective to the, uh, the athletes playing on them. A very short nap, a three quarter inch system that, um, is, is really designed for much heavier use. And what I mean by that is, um, a very, um. A very common use of a very similar system is, uh, like gymnasium, outdoor gymnasiums where they're using like weight sleds or. Or, or even indoor for that matter. So they're putting, you know. Heavy pieces of equipment on there and the, the, the exercises to actually push those weights across the turf. So the, um, the fiber density is much tighter, um. Much more durable than, than a, a turf, um, athletic field would be, uh, because it's not designed so much for. Fall attenuation as it is just for durability. It also, excuse me, it comes with a, uh, a five mil. King to provide, um, you know, a, a hint of cushioning. Um, you know, for protection, just for comfort. Um, but it's, it's definitely not the same sort of sponginess you would get if you're walking out of, you know, a football field. I think there's some details, I know in the presentation you had up, uh, there's some details, technical details on the turf itself. It's the CX one forty system. So it's, uh, you know, it's a full glue down, it's, it's, it's non-porous, uh, you know, the seams, the rolls are, you know, twelve or fifteen foot wide. Um, but again, it's a much, much more durable system in terms of, uh, heavy use than. Than a, a field would be because they're really designed for different purposes.
AJ, can you talk a little bit about the price? Compared to, you know, the, the town is looking at a million dollars to replace their turf football field.
Well, um, what I could tell you is so the, the field size is obviously, uh, probably much bigger. But there, the, the problem with turf fields, football fields and athletic fields is there, there is a million different variations. There's all sorts of different pile heights. There's different infill, um, material. There also could be some base work that, that, um, companies will, uh, include, you know, in that million dollars. So it's hard to tell me, or it's hard for me to tell you like. On a price per square foot with the differences. You know, our system. Um. Is you're probably at the end of the day with some of the adjustments, uh, that we've seen over the last year with, in. Us, we're probably looking at a, at about eleven dollar and twenty five cent price per square foot. Um, that's installed with freight, um, and, uh, you know, uh, a, a full design of the field. Um, so again, the comparison's hard because it's not, it's not apples to apples.
Okay, thank you, AJ.
And, and there's no infill to this.
Right, right, yeah.
Big difference.
Yeah, if you look up, um. Yeah, if you look to, uh, the, it might have been the third page of the presentation. I don't know if you can, yeah, right there. I don't know if you, if you go back down into the actual turf right there, the turf specs. I don't know if you can zoom in on that, but, um. Yeah, it's a. No, it's not, it's not a great picture. Sorry about that. Yeah, it's a, it's a much shorter nap turf. Again, it's designed, it's, it's a little coarser feel, you know, we, we need it obviously for the, uh, the access as well. So, you know, it's, um. You know, to put it in Lehman's terms, it's closer to like an indoor outdoor carpet you might see in a store than a football field that. You know, uh, kids in the area might be playing on.
It gives the resistance ne- needed for the wheelchairs.
Yes, absolutely right. Yeah.
Guys, this is Stephanie with the Miracle League Association. Um, the one thing that, you know, a lot of city and county municipalities worry about is maintenance. Um, and that is the big difference in this and your other turf is the maintenance. There will be no maintenance, um, besides the, you know, once every six months blowing off or. Um, a cleaning off because the rainwater does, does clean it off. Um, so the big difference in costs, what you're gonna see is no maintenance. You know, ask our miracle leagues to set aside money each year to be prepared for a resurface. Um, most of our fields are lasting ten to twelve years, but some are lasting a little bit less or a little bit longer depending on their location and usage. So. Um, those are some of the big differences in what you're gonna see on a typical turf football or baseball field.
Thank you, Stephanie.
And. Explain a little bit what the West Hartford field has done to the community and how many, um, how far you draw from and. How it's helped the lives and the special needs in your community.
Yeah, uh, when we began ours, our field is now, we'll be celebrating our tenth anniversary this year. Um, our surface is a little different. It is a rubber surface. It was, uh, it's sort of predated the turf. Uh, the turf seems to be the new word. Um, and we are within a year or two, uh, from resurfacing. So I think, uh, just anecdotally for the area. I think ten to twelve years is a reasonable expan- uh, expectation of, of longevity. Um, but when we began our league, um. Certainly, our intention was just to have a nice little West Hartford League. We have thirty players in our first year. Um, got quite a bit of publicity. In New England. Um, and. Uh, we grew to about fifty five, I believe, our second year. Uh, we're now up to close to a hundred and forty players. Uh, we draw from about forty different towns in the area. We have eight teams, so four games going every weekend. Um, it's been amazing. Um, the, the families are just so appreciative of having the opportunity for their kids. Um, what Miracle League tends to draw are not. I hate to use the term higher functioning, but, um, you know, some kids with, with physical challenges or, or, you know, intellectual challenges. Can, uh, adapt to a regular little league. Uh, that, those aren't our kids. Uh, we encourage anybody like that to play in a regular little league. Um, our kids are the kids who might not have that opportunity otherwise. You know, it's just. The, the people that are drawn into the town each weekend. Over the summer and, and you know, we use it year round. We do other events. We do an incredible trick or treat event. That draws about three hundred and fifty kids every year. Um, from all over the state. That, that's an amazing event. But what we found, uh, from our families is there's just a general lack of opportunity for their children. Um, so we do many other events. We now do year round pro. Central Connecticut. We have a adaptive dance about to swim. We do a learn the bike ride program. We have a bowling league that's starting in a week. Um, so it just grows and grows, um, based on the interests of the families.
Thank you. So, so we look at this as a sort of a community-wide development, bringing people into town. Um, like I said, we chose this site. Minimal displacement for other leagues based. Um, and, and you know. Our, our committee chose talent. We wanted to invest in talent. We wanted to put it into talent. Talent was our first choice because of the Birch Grove site. Um, if it's not the Birch Grove site, we may have to open our search to other towns that may have funds addition, that may have funds or may want to contribute to the field. The outpouring we've received is tremendous on this field. We have received and commitments. A thousand dollars since the town council said, you know, it's gonna take us a while to get back to you, but why don't you guys start fundraising? And we haven't even been able to do a major fundraising until we have a piece of land and we could put a face on the field. We, we, you know, we, we, we have an executive committee, um, the Boston Red Sox are involved. Jim Penders is running a baseball clinic for us at Star Hill. And, and everybody's involved. Everybody's excited about it. It's in talent. But, you know, at this point, the only site we could really consider to, to give exclusivity to talent is the Birch Grove site because of the potential savings. Otherwise, you know, we, we would have, you know, we would have to open it up to other towns. We felt the site isn't displacing teams. But we'd have to open it up to other towns to see what, you know, we're that excited about this project. We have, feel this has that much to. You know, to, to give to the community that, uh, you know. Coventry and Vernon have contacted us and have heard about the field. So there's a groundswell support for this, but we, you know, our first choice is to put it in talent. That's where we've had a challenger on program for twenty five years and that's where we raised our children. Laurel and I are Woodstock residents, but we still want, you know, want to give this gift to talent, um. It's gonna be a fully paid field. And we're gonna continue to fundraise to, um. To replace the field in twelve. Rates us from what happened in the high school field, which was a state grant for half a million. Bonding for half a million and now twelve years later, it's another million dollar price tag. This would be zero cost to the town of talent. The other question that has been raised is what's our succession plan? What if something happened to Laurel and I? This project is not Laurel and I. We have forty, we have between forty and fifty people involved. So if something happened to us, God forbid, this project would go on. Our thirty-year-old son runs the challenger program for us. I have assistant coaches, I have, you know, many, many, many people are involved in, you know, fundraising and making this done. It, it, you know, it's not a Laurel and Steve Lebovitz project at all.
And when we look at just the history we've had with families. We have, um, athletes who have started with us when they're five. They're now in their thirties. They're still involved. They're still willing to help. They're still interested. And there's always new families that are starting. Every year we turn around and there's another five-year-old. That wants to play baseball or wants to do bowling with us or wants to play soccer. They keep coming and we keep giving.
So we just want to give these special kids a chance in their own special field? You know, and we'd like this to be in talent.
The other thing in terms of cost, we may not. All the cost for, that we had looked at in terms of the surfacing. But if we were going to try and find a plate, a field. To play on in town that wasn't an existing field, we'd be looking at tree removal. We'd be looking at filling. We'd be looking at more huge expenses that weren't talked about in terms of the savings having in a Birch Grove.
Probably seven, eight hundred thousand dollars and we anticipate some of the process and. If the, the, you know, Birch Grove is left as is, we probably could have done this field for four hundred thousand dollars.
All right, so just before.
I guess that's our spiel, Steve.
No, thank, thank you, uh, Steve. Appreciate, you know, thank you for, uh, presentation. I wanted to, before we go to questions from counselors, I did want to. Uh, request because we did invite our town engineer Chuck Eaton. Um, part of our. Is obviously to go forward with the study. So Chuck, would you be able to ride to the council kind of a high level? Review of what this master study would be like in terms of timeline, um, the range that's presented as the, uh, potential cost? And what goes into that, that study?
Sure. Uh, so this is Chuck Eaton. I'm the town engineer. Uh, you know, we, when I had spoken to Mike Rosen about this, I think it was during. Um. It wasn't, it wasn't completely clear as to what the scope of the study would be, so I kind of gave him a range as to, you know. You know, myself and, and Public Works and the rec director would go and look at the different possible areas in town. Um, you know, and, and take a look at what other opportunities, you know, there might, there might readily be, uh, to put this field in there. Scale would be, you know, I would have our athletic field engineers, you know, actually do. Um, a, a much more expert study of, um. The different opportunities in town and, and prepare a report. Um, that could be used by, you know, the miracle field and, uh, and the town.
Okay, thank you. To summarize then, that, that range was, would probably be much lower on scale if it were a more specified location versus kind of searching for. A range of possible locations within the community.
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chuck, for that little summary. And there will be other questions, so I'll open the floor to questions from counselors. Looking at the list, uh. Counselor Khan is first, followed by Counselor Luba, and then.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thanks, uh. My former West Hartford. And, uh, Lou and. Everybody else. The miracle field is. I'm one hundred one percent. Supported. My only question is to. Everybody, even though Chuck too. And Todd. That, since he's talking about that, uh, field is, uh. How much gravel had been taken away and then, uh. Whatever has been put it up, like what the. Cost is gonna be, e- even though if we. Take it out. What the cost is, um. If we move that field somewhere else. How to compare the, first of all, the cost, that's number one. Number two is, uh. And if this is soccer field too, if there's the two games. How, how they're gonna manage that? At the same day. Anybody can answer it?
I think soccer is still here. I don't know, Steve, if you want them to answer that question.
I think perhaps the, the question, I think, um, Counselor Khan might be asking in terms of conflicts of time would be. Maybe directed towards, uh, if the West Hartford Miracle Fields, uh, Rep Mike, how you handle any conflicts, um, for use. And he compared to others. I think that that might be. and he compared to others. I think that that might be towards what councillor Khan is asking.
Sure. Our field is used exclusively by our organization now. It is in a Little League complex where there are three other regular baseball fields, a playground, a concession facility, restrooms. Um, that, so I mean, there are hundreds of people there at any given time. There's four baseball games going on. Three Little League and then one on our field. Um, now we have a large parking area. Um, so it's never been an issue and we've never had conflicts in that manner.
Okay. And then I think Sam, Sammy, just to clarify, when you're talking about the costs about the gravel, was that maybe more towards Chuck or Todd in terms of understanding the the price difference between, yeah?
Yeah, the the cost. If we move that side somewhere else, I'm it's just a question. It's like, it's not something that's for my own information. If you move the side somewhere else, that's number one. Number two is like if I love to have it in talent. That's number one. That's there. There's no doubt. There's no doubt about it. But for me, in order to understand that I don't want to hurt other kids at the same time that they have to be displaced somewhere else, whatever it is, but it's like I don't know. It's like this is too much, too much confusion and then too much thoughts, but like mixed feeling and I don't want to hurt other kids at the same time and neither those kids, because those are the special kids. I hope and my feelings and understanding.
No, of course.
Thank you.
Katie, can you pipe in on since you were head of virtual building committee on what transpired, you know, how, you know, you were involved in our discussions back in March with you and Walt and then um and then and Pete Staba and then and then it was posted. What was, are you aware what was removed? What's changed? Because I know the cost estimate at the time that Todd had done was about four hundred, you know, the field would have cost about four hundred thousand dollars with if everything was left. And that's why we were hoping that this was going to be done, you know, as part of that, we understand people are concerned. It was a change order and everything else. So can you speak about the subsurface?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm just point of order. I think that chairs should be directing this. Because I was actually going to address that issue as well, but I'll leave it to to the chair.
No, thank you, councillor Luba. I think that is a good point that, yeah, questions should be going through the chair and we should be mindful of the the counselors kind of being the primary question. People are asking questions. I I will, in this case, since councillor Khan's question regarding that grading wasn't fully answered, I and if councillor Murray is comfortable answering that question, I would that and then from there, I would recognize councillor Luba to go forward and and start your line of questions.
Sure. Thank you. My understanding of the reclamation of that field was that some of the sub base was removed, primarily the insulation sub base that was underneath the modulars was removed. And is kept there, but I don't, I don't know how much gravel. My, my best understanding of this is that the gravel was kept in an effort to properly grade the field. So the understanding is that there would be different levels of gravel in different areas of the field in order to maintain the appropriate grade. There also was left the electrical connection was left in place, although obviously capped off, so it's safe. So there there is electricity going to the field and all the drainage that was installed to address the modulars were was also left in place. So while I don't know the exact depth of the gravel, my expectation is that it does vary from place to place within the field, although there is gravel there.
Councilman Murray, hopefully that does answer some of your questions. Councillor Khan. Thank you. All right. With that being said, just going back into the order of counselors that had their hands raised. Councillor Luba, followed by councillor Manu Dzek and then councillor Minutio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And that that was an issue that I was going to bring up as well, where I was part of the birch girl building committee at the same time. When we had this discussion, when it was first presented to the building committee and then also in the town council at the same time when we discussed this. So issues where it's been said on several occasions, the town council decided to push this off. The town council decided to do this. That really what it came down to in a driving force and that Ms. Murray can correct me if I'm wrong, but that it was a state project and that they were the one that was directing it. So it wasn't that the town council made a decision saying, we don't want this here or we have to do this. It was the state said, if you do this, then we will not pay for any of this. Or for any of the, any of the grading or any of the other work, uh, you know, in the rest of the area. So I I just want to make it clear that this wasn't something that either the birch girl building committee or the town council decided saying, oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, pave this over. We're gonna remove this and we're gonna grade this. And we're then we're gonna leave it how how it is. That that was a state specifically coming forward and saying, if you do this, then you understand that you will not get any further funding related to any grading, any work on the field, anything else. So I just want to make sure that um, so that's something that, you know, that I that I think that if there's any questions, you can go back to the minutes at the time. But that was pretty well discussed when we were, when we were discussing this initial issue before, when the, when the issue of the miracle field first came up. And I think that as far as any issues regarding the depth of the field or this, the gravel, that's something that can be easily addressed by just having the town, the town engineer who, like, if we do go forward with this study, they can call up and find out from construction company, how much was left, because my my recollection is along the same lines of Ms. Murray where there was some, but it wasn't a lot and it was only enough to just basically make it to grade in certain areas, but that the sub, the subsection, I mean, the subflooring of this, the insulation and a lot of the things that when a when the Leibowitzes first came up to us to propose a miracle field, that that was a big issue. That would have been a huge cost savings. And then when we discussed it, the second time around, that the contractor said, basically, we have to remove all this. Um, and that we're going to be putting down topsoil. So some of the savings that you that was being anticipated for putting it in there at Birch Grove was, you know, was is no longer there. And I guess my main question is it's and it sounds on several occasions now that it's been said that it's essentially birch grove or nothing. Uh, if it's not birch grove, then else? Is that accurate? Because I need, that's something that I would need to know right off the bat, because I'm in support of this and I I I want the miracle field here. I think it's a great idea. But just saying, we will only consider this, that's putting us in a very difficult bind. Because looking at the miracle fields from other places, looking at it, and I lived in West Hartford. I lived just around down the road from the miracle field there after it was built before I moved here to Talend. I've seen the, seen the one down in Mystic that very different from what we're looking at on Birch Grove. That it's a basically a compound where they have not only the miracle field there, but they have other concessions. They have other things that are there. They have other, other um, other, other infrastructure that's there to support, that you have a snack shop, you have a playground, you have other things that aren't there at Birch Grove. And that if we were going to look at it, I would say that the other area that we have is a where we have an existing handicap accessible playground. We have a restroom there. We have infrastructure there that's already existing, which could be something that I think would be a great compound if we wanted to build it all there. But to say that it's going to be birch grove or nothing, then that's going to be a real tough decision. And that's something that I think that we need to know right now where if it's going to be that we're open to anything that the that the town, that the that the engineering study okay, then that's something I'd be considered. But if it's birch grove or nothing, then then I'm not going to be able to go forward with it with within with a with a yes vote on this. Because that means that we have one option and that's it. And that that's not really an engineering study. That's beginning of a project. And that, you know, my understanding was that we're looking at all that, all possibilities when this was put forward on the agenda. Now we're, it sounds like we're being told it's this or nothing. Um, one thing where, you know, that if we can address it after, after other questions. But I mean, the main thing is, is that that again, I just think that the savings that were anticipated previously with Birch Grove aren't there as far as, as far as we know. And that's that just looking at it, you know, from from the way that the other fields have been set up, the way that they're functional, the way that they're operational, the way that they work is because it's an entire this is an entire compound. This is just the one field on a school, which will then also encumber us with other costs like we're put forward, such as um, using the school grounds or either it's either going to be renting porta portapotties or if it's going to be that you want to use the school facilities, then we, then it's already been clear that from the Board of Education that we would have to hire somebody there to to take care of the school while people are there. Um, that and there's other issue. But that's the main question that I would put forward, Mr. Chair, through you is that i- is this, are they, is a miracle field program open to consider all options or is it just that one option?
Thank you, councillor Luba. I guess in that case, I would probably direct it to the miracle field group and then perhaps also getting some insight from the town engineer about uh, what they would consider a scope of study if it was beyond the birch group would be aware of or would consider other spaces to study.
Okay, see if I can speak now.
Yep.
Okay. We would consider other fields. We would not consider other sites. And I want to be specific. We we are, we can, we are not willing to undertake a seven, eight, nine hundred thousand dollar project to clear trees, to bring in topsoil and else. The reason we chose Birch Grove, Lou, I would love it across funds.
That was our first choice.
It is existing soccer fields and we didn't want to displace those existing soccer fields.
And at that point, we were looking at about two hundred or three hundred, just to clear the land. Um, with Birch Grove, it's already handicap accessible. It's level. There's handicap parking spaces. There's an existing there's a loop road for emergencies. Um, as as Katie said, the electrical wiring is there and capped. Um, the water is there, the drainage is there. So although we may not save the money, when we were talking about saving money, Lou, we were talking about if we acted at the time that the the construction was still there and we were of the subsurface from the portables, all that we would have to do at that time would be to do some paving. And then we could go forward. So that's when we were talking about that hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings. But we totally respect them. And I hope this message has gotten across that we totally respect. We didn't want to interrupt anything with the building committee and the project. And we really tried to stay silent and focus totally on our fundraising. So we're talking, we had two different comparisons, the comparisons of before we focused in on that birch grove site, we looked around town, looking to see where we could put a field that wouldn't displace anybody. And it was going to cost us close to seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. If we looked at the fields that are in existence, there still aren't any truly handicap accessible places. We've been there different fields as challenger, even the wonderful Lions field, our wheelchairs don't fit in those dugouts. So almost any field we've been to has a grading system that would have to be changed to make it wheelchair accessible.
Can I add, can I add something here? Can I add something?
Yeah, sure. Todd is as a, as the engineer.
As as the engineer for the miracle field, I as I there, there were three other fields that we looked at. There was a wooded section between Adam's Adventure and the soccer fields that sits down in a hole. Right? That is all wooded, that is surrounded by wetlands, that would be a permitting nightmare. It would be a very cost prohibited site, but it's a, it's a site. It wouldn't be an easy site. It would be a great site from the miracle fields position, because it would be inclusive to the existing infrastructure. But it's adding a quarter of a million dollars to the price tag. So if the town wants to partner with getting this miracle field here, maybe that's an option. There were locations, Crandall, that I talked about, the current field, which has very little parking. It's poor ADA compliant. Um, similar to the the field in the back, they have the same issues and they would be displacing another baseball field and they'd be displacing other soccer fields. So those are the three other sites that the committee looked at back in November. And just Laurel had indicated, that's why we chose Birch Grove. Parking, um, you know, you not taking that whole field, you'd have at least two other U eight fields left to go there, two, at at least two, maybe three. Um, so we've done that study and and so what I'd asked the chair is if Chuck needs to give the miracle field or need so what his scope of services is, because some of this work has already been done. Okay, it's been done by me, a professional engineer. Um, and the miracle field and we can get you that information, but um, we just need to know what you want Chuck to do, because that work has probably been done. Maybe not to the, you know, do preliminary engineering, you know, in our work, in Chuck and I's work, we do preliminary engineering. We try to concept and vet out not just the cost of the field, but the cost of the other infrastructure, the cost of the parking, the cost of power, the cost of permitting. You know, what kind of soft cost you have with trying to permit some of this stuff. So it's we only had it at a very high study type of level. We met back in that October of twenty nineteen and obviously we've got to now January of twenty twenty two. So some of that work is done. All right. Some of it is already done and it might need to be formalized a little bit. Um, but what we're talking about here is is already been done.
Then that information, I think there's some that may be appropriate then to 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 have this, have this any, any vote on this set off until we can have the engineer talk, talk to our town engineer, get this documentation together, get whatever, you know, whatever information he's talking about. If he's got this information, that's something that I think that, you know, would be pertinent for us to sort of figure out. And then, and then, and then bring this up again, because it's something that, you know, we're we're generating study. And if there's been information that would help us decide as far as whether or not that's needed, or if there's other things that need to be considered, that's, that's something that's pertinent that we should be taking a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Luba. I just will respond that I think a lot of what perhaps Todd may be referencing is what was provided earlier last year in terms of their potential design study. And I think the whole impetus of this discussion is we have to have our own in terms of liability, the town. Um, that being said, we would probably see potential savings on that scope, that range of cost based on what information Mr. Penny and the miracle field could provide to Chuck in addition to um, formally finalizing what the scope of of that study would be if it's approved at this meeting. But that would just be my perspective on it. Without getting too much into it back, back and forth, I mean, I think ideally it'd be good to have a final decision. But I certainly do respect that perspective.
Right. So that means that's all I have.
Of course. Thank you, councillor Luba. So councillor Manu Dzek, followed by councillor Minutio and then councillor Regan.
Thank you. Do you have a bunch of questions as the conversation goes, of course, more come up. Um, first, I was looking First, I always look at things as an opportunity. What happened to Birch Grove was awful, but we got a brand new school and now we have another opportunity to use what's left. Um, but saying that, I do still have a lot of questions. Maybe I'll just try and pick the top five or something. I know there's a lot of, um. Concerns about soccer losing fields, um, like Sammy said, and. That concerns me as well. Um, but it's. It's not gonna lose as many as they thought since last year. Is that correct when I ask that? Whoever can answer that? Dave's shaking his head no, but the Leboitses, could you answer that?
I believe, um, when I looked at the, the measurements, there could, if, if the fields were one, two, three, four. There could be four U eight soccer fields. If they were one. Like they originally were, there would be three. In addition, our field would be available for U six and U eight soccer. So the kids, yeah, kids could also play on our field.
See, um, Dave shaking his head. I just wanna give, give him a fair chance to respond to that. If I can, um, Steve.
Sorry, I had to step away for. I would say it's okay to have some response, but I think it's important to recognize that the scope of this conversation. The parties that are involved in making this decision. Staff, the town council and the Miracle Field. Certainly there was time for public participation and input, um, earlier on. Um, but I just don't want it to devolve into every single person here suddenly. Providing input when it was, when we probably should, if this, what does move forward, have a, a larger joint special. The necessary parties.
Okay, all right. Um. So.
Can, can I respond? Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand raised, Dave. Sorry, you're on another screen for me. If, if you can keep it brief, yes, that would be appreciated.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll keep it very short. So first of all. Just to clear up the confusion, this Birch Grove field. Always been a soccer field. So saying that it's not a soccer field is not accurate. I have aerial photography going back to at least two thousand and seven from Google that show it lined as a soccer field. That's number one. Number two. The field that was on the drawing. That was just presented about ten minutes ago. Clearly was drawn by nobody that's ever played soccer. That field is shown right up to the fence line, which is a horrible safety hazard. So first of all, there has to be at least a ten yard setback at each end of that field. So that shrinks it further. Second of all, there needs to be space for spectators between the fields. So best case. You're looking at, thank you. You'll notice the, on this drawing, what would be the east and west ends of the field. Are drawn right up against the fence. So instead of eighty-five yards, the true length of that field would be sixty-five yards. You'd be looking at best case, two fields aligned horizontally. But without knowing what's, uh, what the stormwater management area is. Um, on, on the, uh, left-hand side. Uh, in the outfield of the Miracle Field, there might need to be a setback of that as well. So, uh, best case is two fields possibly. Um, typically this would be set up as four fields and there's some logistical and, and structural reasons why we need four fields. Co-located. So make no bones about it, this is displacing, th- this is trading a soccer field for a miracle baseball field. In a small, uh, uh, remaining field that would be used for, I'm not sure what.
All right. Thank you, Dave. And I, I just will add to that that might be a part of our continuing to. Council, Councilman Udache, that, um, the study may want to ideally give a scope of, of not only what. The project would need, but what the impact or what the remainder of the current open site. Uh, would provide if, if, if we go forward with it. So just to add that as a little bit of context, but Councilman Udache, please, uh, proceed.
Um, so to be clear, this study is to show. But and how these fields can be used. I mean, it could come back and say, nope. You know, and that's when we decided and asked the probably more difficult questions. Am I correct by asking or saying that?
I believe so, Chuck. If you could clarify or perhaps, uh, Lisa, in terms of the study would ideally be studying feasibility. Of the, of the space if approved.
Right, right. And that was one of, you know, part of my job is to. On and, and make sure that, um, we don't have issues going forward and, and certain things. And so I think, I think it would benefit the town to do some due diligence and to look at a study that would. Um, show, you know, okay, what, what would be if the Miracle Field wasn't. Uh, to be built at Birch Grove, how would, how would that be best used by different athletic? Um. You know, what maybe, maybe trading different fields from one recreation area to Birch Grove and putting the Miracle Field. At say like Cross Farms or something like that, you know, what, what are the different pros and cons of, you know, looking at the, the town's. Recreation areas as a whole, um, and, and what would fit best where? And the, the nice thing about. You know, having me as time, I have other folks within our firm that are experts in these fields that. You know, we have a whole group and all they do is design athletic fields and, and look at these types of situations. Um. So they'll be able to analyze things like, you know, the, the runout area of the, the certain fields and, and things like that. Um, so yeah, that would be something that I would, I would recommend we have be part of the study. And, and you know, maybe. Probe is the perfect place for this field. I, I, without really looking at it, I, I don't think we necessarily know.
Right, so I think.
Can I just make a clarification?
Uh, sorry, Todd, you're, you're currently not recognized. Sorry. You have to, we need, need to go through the order of the counselors.
I just wanted, all right, I, I would like to clarify one of Dave's statements, so, okay.
Uh, perhaps after, after your counselor, your check is, uh, needed a question, we can, you can have that.
Um. So I, I want to ask that for myself and then maybe others that are on here that maybe that will ease their mind a little bit. This is a study. Um, so, uh, just wanted to maybe just mention that. Cause I do have the concerns that some others have soccer, but. I'm not a soccer buff right now, so I don't know. Are you playing? I know. Can't go back and forth, I guess. My question would be, have they been playing somewhere else since Birch Grove hasn't been there? Don't know. That eventually could get answered. Um. And then maybe this is a question for Chuck. I'm not sure how, if I missed it. I'm sorry, apologize, but how long will this study take?
Uh. Probably a couple of months.
Okay, would it, I wanna interfere with. Birch Grove education going on, right? Cause you're just away from the school. Um.
Does the study itself?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
I wanna interfere with the day. Okay, I didn't think so. Um, then I just wanted to add too, cause when, um. Uh, Councilman Minucio and. Uh, Chair Jones, we went for the sidewalk on Saturday and I think it was very informative. Uh, the, and that was in East Lime and they mentioned that. Their gym classes of physical education is also out on the field. That it's more accessible for children that do have special needs. So I think we do need to look at. And now the Board of Ed is, um, not sure yet and that's why we will have a joint meeting with them, but I do think it's an advantage. For all children that are in education during the day, um, even. Um, like just that. They, and I know some people have concerns that the actual field is not inclusive. Think they mean by when they say that or ask that, they are referring to, it's just. Special needs children. Um, so I just wanna, whenever I hear a question. If I like it or don't like the question, I just wanted to get clarified. So I don't know if the Leboitses could answer to that question. Do you?
Oh, sorry. Good.
Steve can he answer it?
All right, sorry. Were you directing the questions to Leboitses?
I think the Leboitses would be the experts. Maybe I'm wrong on that question.
But no, our, our, our intent was the field would additionally, we'd use it a couple nights a week. The field would also be used by U six T-ball. You know, what a tremendous field for the kid, for all those kids to be able to play on them. Generally, they're, they're not, probably not even put on a baseball diamond. And, and, and our vision was, you know, in our design, increased our costs, um, East Lime uses, also uses it for soccer. And, you know, in our fundraising and our grand scheme of things, at some point, we'll continue, we hope to continue to fundraise and put lights there. So, um, I do know that the, um, top soccer plays at the high school and they play eight o'clock in the morning.
Right, I guess the question or the concern is really that there's no, um. You know, I don't, you know what I'm trying to ask?
I, and I think that Mike Mashad addressed it when he talked about there's. Just as there's all ability levels in all people, there's all ability levels in disabled athletes. And there are many disabled athletes that are able to play on a typical sports team. There are many just that they can't play on a typical sports team. And most of the reasons for that are safety. Are the fields that we. The field that we have designed would be completely fenced in for one thing. Many of the typical fields are not completely fenced in. And we've had multiple experiences where we've had athletes whose greatest desire is to set up a chase game and run. So having the complete, the field completely fenced in would alleviate an awful lot of safety issues. Um, but that doesn't mean that a typical child wouldn't benefit from that as well. They can use the field for recess. They can use the field for after school. They can use the field. Uh, families could come with, at, with their family and use the. Um, you can use it for kickball. You can use it for, um, Dave was talking about dance. Kids could practice their dance routines there. They could practice gymnastics. It's a rubber, you know, it's, it's a cushion. Um, surface. So it can be used for so many different things. And I think that one of the things that is looked upon by some of our families who have. Children or disabled adults, they don't want it to seem as though they, that the disabled athletes have to go to this field. And it's a field just for disabled athletes. It is not. We would like to open it up to senior citizens to use. We'd like to open it up to veterans to use. We would like to use it for unified sports. Um, where we could have typical athletes play with disabled athletes. One of the big differences between a unified sport situation and our programs that we've run is safety. You can't, you know, a lot of times you can't mix that different skill level. That being said, one of the things we haven't been able to do is to have an adult baseball league. For our disabled athletes who have skilled out and aged out. Um, if we were able to have more field use. Tuesdays and Thursdays evening, evenings from six to seven for the last twenty-five years. That's been our time. If we, if there's more field availability for us even, we can set up an, an adult disabled. League, which would be huge. We have many, many of our former athletes that we speak to one frequently and. He starts his conversation every day, when, when can I play baseball? You know, we've, there's a population out there that has no place to play and they can't play with Special Olympics. Because they aren't as high functioning as needed to be to play in Special Olympics. I hope that may address it a little bit, you know, and there, there was a question also, Colleen, about. Could the field be flooded for a skate, a skating rink? And to me, that's a real possibility for that. Could we put up, um, the boards to, to flood it to make it an ice skating rink for the town? I think that would be a great idea. And again, that would be used for everyone, use, usable for everyone.
Um, yeah, that was great, um, for the, and those two, and. Sorry, Steve, I go through real quick, um. It, I'll just wrap it up, cause I know there's a lot of people wanna ask questions and it's late, again, late. I mean, I think it's a great opportunity. Again, I think this is an engineering study. It'll come back and. Give us more information and if it's something, you know, I. Would love, I think we all on here want the same thing. We all want all children, especially special ed. Heads and. They have somewhere to go. I do think it's a big possibility. It will bring in economic growth. Um, if it's from eating somewhere to shopping at Big Y, all they drop off the kids for practice. I'm not sure. I think that's another op- opportunity for Colin. Um, I just thank you. For your dedication. As always, you guys are always looking out for the ones that don't. Opportunities as other families and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Udache. So, yeah, I do wanna be mindful of the time. So I think it is important, uh. Just as a refresher that we should be trying to focus a lot of our line of questioning as much as possible on the study itself. I think a lot of the questions that we are having are very valuable, but a lot of them, I think, need to be answered if the, if it is approved. Um, through an engineering study from the town engineer. Master study. Um, with that being said, I, I do wanna recognize, I think. Councilman Minucci, I forget if you were next or was Counselor Regan and then, and then Counselor Newtcho, cause it looked like you fell off and then came back on. And ended up at the bottom of my list.
I, yeah, my computer rebooted on me in the middle of the meeting. It just went black screen. It's never a good thing.
But I think it was Vice Chair Regan and then it was you, followed by Counselor, Councilman Murray.
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank. So I'm, I've distilled this thing down, uh, pretty well, I think. I had a lot of questions, uh, but. Based on what Chuck said, the town engineer, and based on what we're talking about tonight, we're talking about authorizing the study. And the way Chuck described it, uh, would, would answer all of my questions. He said that. Is that site appropriate? Are there other, other sites that are appropriate? What are the impacts gonna be to that, to the, uh, other leagues? And those types of questions are the questions that I had that will be answered by this study. Point out that we've heard, uh, a lot about the Miracle Field tonight from, from the folks that are advocating for the Miracle Field. But our sports leagues have been limited to public participation. So we may need to go back to, uh, completing the study and then maybe having a special meeting as Mr. Jones. Uh, mentioned earlier, so that our sports leagues, our soccer leagues, our lacrosse leagues can all have a voice in this. And not be limited to two minutes of public participation. So, um, I, I am gonna support doing the study the way. And then perhaps when we get the study results back, calling for a special meeting and let these, let our sports leagues in town have a voice in, in this. Uh, in this Miracle Field. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Regan. I, I do a hundred percent agree with that as well. We did receive a lot of input, I think. In the earlier iterations of, of this project and we did encourage through the e-blast to have various sports leagues update or provide that input. But I think that was a part of it as well as, um, if this does go forward. Sidewalk with East Lime, they highlighted an MOU that was established between the Board of Ed and, and the town and the Miracle Field. And I think that would be a subsequent, um, joint meeting or perhaps a part of that same joint meeting is, is the Board of Ed's input if this was passed. Um. What their perspective is. And I do believe, um, Dr. Will is on, so after counselors have an opportunity to speak. I would like to give them an opportunity to provide any input or the board's perspect. But with that being said, sorry to interject, Counselor Regan. Are you, are you, uh, said at this point?
No, that's it. That's all I have.
All right. So in that case, then we would move on to, uh, Councilman Minucci followed by Councilman Murray.
Thank you. So funny you should say that because, um, uh, I have a few, I have a few questions, um, but the very first thing.
Um, but the very first thing I wanted to do is I know, um, Walt is on, so I wanted to see if he had any feedback. The things that I have said very frequently is, um, while all the schools are town property and we could say, yeah, we're going to do this there. I don't think that that would be the wise decision since this is going to be in a school property. I think the Board of Ed should have, um, a say in this. So I'm wondering if Dr. Willett, if you have any feedback from the Board of Ed, uh, any concerns or not on having this field specifically on, um, Birch Grove.
So, um, so I do have some. I, I would say that, um, first on behalf of the board, you know, I want to express that they truly appreciate the efforts of the Leibowitz family and Mr. Penny and others that are advocating, um, for the children. Certainly individuals in their efforts deserve everybody's gratitude and respect for both the time and energy that they've been giving. Um, to that end, I think three themes came up in the information that was provided by the board with at this time, um, essentially their location, funding and historical considerations. So location was generally speaking, um, you know, as some others have said tonight, there was, uh, there were some opinions expressed that an alternative location, um, could be considered so as to increase the town field opportunities for children versus using part of an existing field. Um, the second there was funding, um, financial that were shared were thoughts, um, about they're really needing to be a comprehensive plan for funding sources for the build, maintenance, upkeep and the renewal of the field. These being crucial for the long-term success of the field. Um, you know, for example, you know, if, if there isn't anything allocated for long-term upkeep, the field could become, you know, unusable ultimately. So early estimates of maintenance, um, on the field, a thousand dollars annually for sanitizing and grooming, something like that. Um, and there would need to be an understanding of where this would be incurred before any additional feedback could be provided. Um, and without a developed viable, ongoing funding model, the period, uh, the periodic renewal of the field could be relegated to the school system through the capital project request process inadvertently. Um, and that could reduce available resources in its projects that serve students of all exceptionalities. So similar to location, redirecting the school system's capital funding could result in a loss of resources for students versus adding to the resources available for the town overall, which, uh, I think is the intention and the spirit of the effort. So that's the financial, um, piece. And then historically, as some have mentioned with the turf field, concern that historically the development of the artificial turf field at the high school resulted in some unresolved issues around maintenance, upkeep and renewal. And there's a desire to learn from this experience of the past and create the best possibilities for future success. Um, so finally, the project, you know, is being presented or has been presented during the time of a previous board would be discussed during the tenure of this board, um, and if approved, somewhere in the tenure of a future board. So this is ultimately a town decision. Um, for the greatest opportunities of success to be actualized, the town will benefit from a plan for how it wants to approach field development, both natural and synthetic. Um, and its capacity to support such development in an optimal manner by having kind of a long-term plan as a town for it. So that's really the feedback that was gathered on location funding and historical considerations.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Um, that's beneficial to know. Um, so I, I have a, a couple of, a couple of things. First and foremost, I think everybody who knows me knows how much I love the game of soccer. Um, you know, I've watched my kids play soccer in Tallinn, uh, their whole lives. I still go to the high school and watch the girls soccer team play and take pictures for them every single year. With that, now I, I, people have reached out to me about the, um, the soccer teams and the soccer fields that were previously on there. And I just want to make sure that we're really level setting on one thing. The Birch Grove School Project displaced those teams for a couple of years. There's no disputing that. And I think that there is ample proof that, you know, soccer and lacrosse struggled without having those fields available to them. To be canceled and practices that had to be canceled and, you know, the trying to maneuver things around. So kids had the opportunity to play games was difficult. So I don't want us to get down the path of saying, um, well, it hadn't been played there for the last couple of years. So we're not displacing them. Because, you know, there will be displacement. Um, looking at the, the information that's in the packet and the assumption of the eighty-five by fifty-five, sorry if you can hear my dog grunting away, the eighty-five by field, um, that would not be big enough to house field fields. Because you have to have spectators, you have to have a ten yard setback from the fences. You can't go all, all, all the way to the fences. Um, I think realistically, from what I'm being told, we could probably get two fields there. Um, which means that in that area, we would still be displacing, um, two teams worth of field space at a U eight H level. Um, so that's a, now that being said, I am very, very much in favor of the miracle field. Um, I think sports are a vital, um, it's a vital pathway for everybody. And, um, I was kidding around the Leibowitzes, not so much kidding around and saying that, you know, if we get the miracle field, I want Kevin's court. Um, you know, I've seen Kevin's court in another town. I love Kevin's court. They had it done. You know, I'm a firm believer that everybody should know what it feels like to dunk a basketball. So, um, you know, I think this is an opportunity for the town to have the miracle field and Kevin's court. Um, so everybody can have these inclusive experiences. Sports are important to everybody regardless of ability. And having a place where we can all do that regardless of ability is important to me. Where I'm concerned, what I want to understand is, um, the development, the opportunity for these fields to be placed anyplace else. Ideally, I would love these to be at, um, Cross Farms with Adams Adventure because we already have the infrastructure there. But I recognize that it's a bigger cost to this project. So, um, I would like to know what that cost is. So we can then talk about, does that make more sense? Because if we say yes, miracle field, Birch Grove only plays. Need to find, I need to find room for soccer and lacrosse. We need to have a whole nother field someplace else because we are displacing teams. And, um, it is going to make it harder for those kids to play and have the field ability, the field availability and the practice availability and all of the other things that come along with it. So it's not a one and done to say that we're just gonna, um, put the miracle field there and then, you know, soccer will be fine because they haven't been playing there. Because they won't be. Same with lacrosse. So what I would like to understand from this engineering study is what other options are there? And I understand that Mr. Penny went through and looked at these, these options. But, um, Chuck, this is what I would be looking for from this study is what other options are there? Either for a miracle field or for subsequent fields for soccer and lacrosse and everybody else to have that same level of availability. We frequently hear from people how everybody moves to Tallinn for the schools and everybody's moving to Tallinn for their children, right? So even if there's a little lull right now, we're going to have a boom at some point. So we can't go off of may or may not, or did or didn't, you know, we need to have the field capability. So I need to understand what the options are. And I would like to truly understand what are all the costs associated if we were to put it at Cross Farms. Then we can have those discussions to see if there is town or availability of ARPA funding or any other ideas out there. If we can find some kind of grant money from the state for this or something. Um, just so we can have a full picture. I understand the desire for it to be at Birch Grove, but that means we need to find something somewhere else. So Chuck, that's what I'm kind of looking for from this engineering study is, um, full review of where it could go. And if it goes at Birch Grove, where else can I put fields for soccer and lacrosse and everybody else that is um, displaced by this?
Yes, un- understood.
Um.
You disappeared from my screen, Tammy, I think because your hand went down. So just want to make sure I didn't want to move on if you didn't have any additional questions.
I think that's it. And just looking at my questions here, um, yeah, I think that I got everything. That was a concern for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio. Councilman Murray.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanted to start by saying that I remembered things a little bit differently than what Counselor Luba, uh, said earlier. To the best of my recollection, we did not go to the state to find out, uh, what their opinion was about us putting a change order in to add the miracle field to the Birch Grove project. Um, what the, the building committee, uh, did decide or, or did advise, um, and what town council decided was uh, that due to concerns about delays and all the complications involved with, um, adding a kind of a extra component to the Birch Grove Field Reclamation Project that it wasn't appropriate at that time to, uh, there. Um, so while the, uh, approach, I remember a little bit different than, um, Counselor Luba, the outcome is the same. Um, I, I do believe that there is a potential for cost savings uh, by using the Birch Grove space. I do believe that there is gravel underneath the dirt. Um, that would allow this project uh, if it were put in at Birch Grove. I look around at, um, our community. I look around at my friends and my neighbors. Um, as does, uh, all, all of our counselors and certainly Counselor Nuccio, um, express this as well. Uh, our community has a lot of focus on our kids and, and their sports, right? Like this is important to our community. Having sports availability, uh, having beautiful spaces for parents to, uh, watch their kids play sports. Um, having great spaces for our kids to, you know, the younger siblings to go play on the playground while their older siblings are practicing soccer or lacrosse or baseball or any of the other sports is, uh, really a wonderful part of being in Tallinn. I think that, uh, the idea of expanding that experience beyond, uh, the, the children of n- normal or quote unquote, normal ability i- is really wonderful. Um, I would echo the comments that many of my colleagues have said where, uh, the Leibowitzes have shown a substantial dedication to, uh, this special needs community. For over thirty years, I think, uh, Mr. Leibowitz said of working on different, uh, special needs athletics. And I thank you very much for that. Um, I agree that there's a concern about displacement. Um, I hope that instead of us seeing that as a negative, that we see it as an opportunity as Councilwoman Nuccio, uh, kind of that we, we might be able to expand the town's fields options, uh, beyond what we're currently using. Um, and I think that would be a wonderful opportunity for our town. So I thank the Leibowitzes. I thank the miracle field for bringing this to us, um, for giving us this opportunity to not only offer or c- consider a field that has, uh, that's specifically designed for special needs. So to kind of raise our heads a little bit and look around at other field opportunities in our town. Um, now we've, we've talked about, you know, looking at other field opportunities. And I wonder, what is the scope of work for this engineering study? Would it include, as Counselor Nuccio requested, looking at alternate spaces for lacrosse if the miracle field were to be put in the Birch Grove location?
So I believe that that would be a question if, uh, Chuck, if you were able to respond.
Yes. Sorry, I wasn't clicking up on the unmuting. Uh, yes, that would be something that, that we would look at. That's, that's something that, uh, you know, I had kind of mentioned there that I think it would be who the town to see if things could get switched around or what could, you know, what's the best fit for the town? What's, what's, you know, with it, within our overall master plan.
Sure. I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for us to make that evaluation. Um, my understanding is that this engineering study would be paid for by the Miracle Field League. Is that correct?
I believe. Question for the Leibowitzes?
Well, you know, based on what I'm hearing, I think it should be a shared cost by all the sports leagues in town. I don't think we should pay for a study that could decide where, you know, without a commitment to the Birch Grove site. To, you know, i- i- if, if the Birch Grove site was committed to, that if the engineers had a setback and the Birch Grove site was for a, a, a bigger engineering study to see where soccer and lacrosse can go, yes. But, you know, I, I don't want to breach my fiduciary duty to our donors and pay twelve thousand dollars that then come back and say, yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's just not going to work. Now, if, i- i- if, if this is a partnership to expand fields and find a place for the miracle field. And I don't think any of the leagues have said, a miracle field is a bad idea. It's just, we want to hold on. And if everybody's willing to share that cost, we're willing to share that cost. But for us, you know, for us to fund, I mean, we did a breakfast for Santa, we raised twelve hundred dollars. So for us to write a check for ten thousand dollars is significant.
And I think, Steve, to just again, go back in history, when we discussed in May, um, when the study was recommended in May and we were trying to push this project along so that it could be done. The construction was done and they said an engineering study would be needed. We said at that time, we would pay for that study. But that study was specifically at the Birch Grove site. So now things have changed. Understandably, things have changed. I, I, I understand it. Again, you know, we were pushing in timeliness to try to make a good financial decision for the project. And now making a decision that Miracle League will pay for this and we don't have any, we still don't have a home. If we could come up with an agreement that if there is a site that is proven to be worthy of the project, it's a different story than saying, let's take a study to see where Miracle League can fit in or whether it can't. The other teams would go. It's a much bigger study. And again, it's a much bigger timeframe for us to be on hold waiting for an answer.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I think based on that answer, uh, that changes the situation that, I guess, the question before us is a, an engineering study funded by Miracle Field uh, to understand the viability of that field. If we're hearing now, um, that due to an expansion of that study, the miracle field, uh, is not prepared to move forward independently or by themselves, then I think that does change the matter before us.
I think that that is a, and I'm noticing that there's a second round of questions. We're reaching eleven o'clock and we still have other agenda items to discuss. I think it would be incumbent of, of us to potentially, uh, postpone this, this topic to get a, a further clarification, understanding, um, to a future meet, to perhaps the next meeting or a future meeting. And I hate to keep postponing it, but it seems like we've gone like, and if the, unless we're going to keep this strictly to a study of the Birch Grove site, um, and possible alternatives, if, if it's going to be expanded to trying to understand where to dis, where to, um, your alternative locations for what may or may not be. your alternative locations for what may or may not be, be able to be there anymore. I think that is, yeah, escaping the intent of our agenda item.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Sammy, just a quick question, just because Katie still technically has the floor and answered their question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure, it, it looks like the Leibowitz maybe are expanding on the answer to my previous question.
Well, if I, if, you know, if I, Steve, if I look at the agenda item that was presented as part of the package, the item says for the town of, the town, town council to consider a less resolution to author conduct it on the Birch Grove grounds for the possible Miracle, Miracle Field project implementation. This study will be funded and filed by Miracle League and the funds will be deposited with the town prior to commencement of the study. That is the agenda, you know, that is the agenda item background that is listed. And then if you go to the, the actual agenda, it says the same thing. So it's resolution, authorizing, it's very exciting on Birch Grove. And that's within the package in two different places is what I thought we were looking for.
Yeah, I think that is, yeah, that is a fair assessment and
and it's expanded well, well beyond that tonight and
and again, we would be willing to fund that study if it was and an agreement could be made that if the study came back positive, the field would be built. We would be very happy to take that risk. And that is still is a risk.
Yeah, there it is. Other way.
So, uh, Steve, it, it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it sounds like based on what's in the agenda that council has interest in seeing the study be a little bit broader than what's in the agenda. And I'm wondering if our town engineer could speak to what would be involved with evaluating alternate sites? Not for Miracle Field, but for other leagues that might be displaced due to the development? Could that be done separately? Is that an intense study? Off the top of your head, you know? Do you have any idea what that might cost?
Well, that's, this is kind of why I had, I had kind of given Mike Rosen a range because it wasn't really clear like what, what exactly we were going to be doing. So you know, I, I think yeah, we could, I can, I can come up with whatever type of scope would make the most people happy. Yeah, we, we could, we could do kind of like a, a master plan study of the fields in town in general and with a, you know, and then, you know, take a look at the, the Birch Grove site separately and you know, knowing, knowing what might be displaced by Miracle Field and how that would fit in with an overall master plan. Yeah, these are, these are all things we could do. And, you know, so, you know, the more, the more we put into the scope, obviously you're getting kind of towards like the higher end of the fee scale. So, um,
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chair, at this point, it recommendation that the council maybe move on to the, the next item and the interim town manager to work with the Miracle Field people to understand what their willingness might be for an engineering study to understand, based on the comments of the council members, what we might be looking for, for a campaign of some kind and seeing if we can get pricing together for all of those items so that we can consider the large picture here of field use.
Thank you, Councilman Murray. I think that, that might be a prudent option. I do see Councilman Nuccio, Councilman Utecheck and Counselor Luba have their hands up still. And again, this is the second time we're approaching 11 o'clock and I'm very concerned that unless counselors are comfortable moving forward with the resol- agenda item as laid out, that I think we should understandably postpone it because it does seem like that there are concerns or questions raised. But if people, if counselors are comfortable moving forward with the study that was presented, that it was a study of, of the Birch Grove site and its feasibility, that we could potentially conduct a vote, but I definitely certainly don't want to interrupt other counselors. So I think my list was actually, so sorry, my Counselor Luba, Counselor Utecheck, Counselor Nuccio, and then I see, you know, Counselor Khan had their hand up. So I think that's the order, but, but again, we really need to be mindful of time. We still have other agenda items on this, on the packet for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief on this. That I think this is something that really, it's now a situation where there's need to be an agreement in writing, not just like a discussion as far town manager and the Miracle Field people. I think this needs to be something set down in writing, specifically outlining what is going to be studied, who is going to be responsible for what, all of this, because it sounds like that based upon what we've heard so far is that for the Miracle Field, it is Birch Grove or nothing. This is the only thing we agree to that, while I, and I, and that, if that's, that's something that really ties our, ties our hands. And then not only that, but that it's Birch Grove or nothing. Engineering study comes back that, saying that this is a good location, then you have to go forward with it. That, so that's really, you know, the agreement as being presented or the proposal as being presented is something that's untenable. Because basically we're being asked to go right now saying, all right, yes, let's go forward and do this. And if the engineering study is good, then, then, then I'm going to, I'm going to just go forth and build it. Which I don't think that we're in any position to do. So I would agree wholeheartedly that this is something that should be tabled that the town manager should sit down with the Miracle Field people, that we may even get our lawyer, the lawyers involved and get an agreement. So it's clearly set out as far as what the expectations are, what's going to be going on, so that there's no hard feelings or that there's no misunderstanding. Because now we're talking about money, we're talking about contracts, we're talking about Miracle Field going forward with an expense on something where, you know, that could create a promissory situation that they could go out and that, that they could sue for specific performance free with it, or if it's something goes sideways. So this is where we really need a legal agreement on this as far as what the, what the terms are, what the obligations are for each side and what the parameters are. And I, I, I mean, that's, I hate being that guy, but I'm that guy. And I think that's really our job right now for due diligence on all sides so that there's no misunderstanding as far as what the expectations are. So my, my request is that this be tabled for that to be done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Luba. Called by Counselor Nuccio and then Counselor Khan. You are speaking
You're still muted.
Yeah, it's, it's saying you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. I don't know if it's a speaker issue. Yeah, no, we still can't hear you. Still seeing some issues, but maybe, maybe in the meantime, if we could move on to Counselor Nuccio while, while Counselor on the audio difficulty.
Do you want to try one more time, Colleen? You just unmuted. Okay, sure, thank you. So I just want to point out some discrepancy. On the Talend webpage, it says Talend Council to discuss study for Miracle Fields and it says Birch Grove grounds or alternative locations. So I think it, it is on the webpage that it says alternative locations. And I here is, you hear my dog snoring. I'm very sorry. I, I think the problem is that and I understand the Leibowitz want the study to be on the usage of Birch Grove. But I, I think as a council, our question has always been, is that the best site for it? So I think we need to determine that before we can commit, because if I'm hearing what the Leibowitzes are saying, they're saying they don't want to pay for the study on certifying that the engineering need for Birch Grove and as much as I want this field, we have to, like I said, the, we can't consider moving forward unless we find homes for every, everything else. So if we're or to determine again, if, if the, if the Miracle Field would be better in a different location. So I thought the engineering study was going to said, you know, at alternative locations or as a whole, is Birch Grove the best? What do we need there? If not, what's the alternative location? Where can we, where would we be looking to put these? These fields? And then the same time, we would be deciding what we do with the displaced teams. So I'm a little concerned with approving it as is, because I think if we approve it as is, it's committing us to saying that the Miracle Field has to be at Birch Grove. And I can make that commitment yet without the engineering study, unless I'm reading something here differently, Steve. I think that's what we would be committing to is that Birch Grove is the location.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio. I think that that is a potential interpretation. With that being said, Councilwoman Utecheck, just want to give you a chance to see if your audio is working now. You are good.
It was my other, I had, anyways. I was saying, trying to say it nicely, just disappointed the resolution clearly says it's a a study for Birch Grove. If they comes back and it says we can't squeeze all these fields in, that's another conversation for us. I said it earlier, that's where we have the difficult questions. I somewhere else, but to get lawyers involved and everything at this point, Leibowitz might just say Talend doesn't believe in us, we're going to take our business somewhere else. So I'm I, I get everybody's concerns, but we're not even giving them a chance. If they're willing to pay for this survey out of their pocket and then you know, I, I just don't understand why this is going to be the third time it's been pushed out.
Thank you, Councilwoman Utecheck. And I do appreciate that, that concern and I, and you know, if nothing else, I think from my personal perspective, and I probably repeated myself a lot, I think we're just reaching such a late hour that it's very difficult for us to make a reasonable conclusion with some of the concerns that were raised. You know, even as a, as a point of note, I don't even think the resolution is actually in the meeting packet. It's only the agenda item. So that might be a concern if we can even move forward with the resolution if it's not actually laid out. Because it's not actually published, it's only the agenda item. But with that being said, Counselor Khan, your, your hand is raised next.
Uh, the only thing I was going to say, I'd like to have comments for Mr. Penny and Dave, the last comment is because Penny was going to say something, but we didn't give him a chance. Thank you.
Sorry, Steve, I just have one last question. I mean, interrupt, then whose fault is it that didn't put the resolution in here? Because under this, it says this is what we're going to be voting on, right? I just don't understand. I know it's late, I must be getting a little cranky, but I just
Yeah, and again, at the, at the hour, I do recognize your question. I do want to say though, that Counselor Khan was recognized and he had a question and wanted to have Mr. Penny's hands up to provide commentary. But I think we late hour, we need to postpone this. I think we're, I'm seeing too many people that are frustrated, confused. You know, so I think that's just my recommendation at, at this point. But if, if Mr. Penny, if your hand is up from the Miracle Field, if you a little bit of commentary, that is fine, but I think we absolutely need to to postpone this.
Yeah, so I shot Chuck an email. Saying tomorrow, we could talk about what I've done. For the record, the plan that I put together just outlined the open area. I hope the council has a little bit more confident confidence in the, their neighboring towns, town engineer not to project the limit of a field to go up against the fence. So I was just giving the area, a rectangular area of how much was there. That that was going to be the limit of the soccer field. So have a little bit more confidence in, in, in your resident, a member of the inland wetlands agency and your local neighboring town engineer. So that wasn't the intent. And I do believe you could get two fields, the U8 fields in there. But I shot Chuck an email. We can come up with a scope of work. We can work this out. I think you're right, Chair. I think you do have to postpone this. Yet, but I think, I think that's a, a good approach.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Todd. And, and so, so with that being said, I do see hands up, but I, but I, if, if anyone really does have any other additional commentary, I think we should just I would entertain a motion that we postpone this topic to a future meeting pending discussions between the Miracle Field, the town engineer and the town manager's office to put forward a, a clear regarding the scope of work.
Motion to table.
Almost. I, I would just ask that the motion be that it gets postponed to our next meeting.
Yeah.
And not a future meeting, but our next meeting.
Your next meeting.
Motion to postpone it.
Yep.
On that issue, I mean, I, I think that the, that there's a lot of moving parts where there, I mean, to, to say that you expect to have this done in two weeks well, to work on an agreement. I mean, if that's something that can be done with a I'm good with that, but I think it's something that if it's not done, I don't want to put on the, put on the agenda just for us to be in that same, the same situation where we're still unclear as far as what the, the real agreement is. And that the town council should see the written agreement between Miracle Field and, and the town as far as the scope of the study as part of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luba. So that motion was made by Counselor Nuccio, seconded by Counselor Murray. If there's any further discussion, sorry, Lisa on the motion?
Yes, please. Can we repeat that?
So the motion is to postpone this topic to our next council meeting pending a, a discussion between the Miracle Field, the town engineer and the town manager's office to have a more concise resolution or agreement about the study.
Thank you.
All right. So if there's no further discussion, do a roll call vote.
Actually, I'm sorry, I didn't have a discussion. Again, if we post about it, you should do it quick as possible. Leibowitzes have been waiting a long time. In, in the agenda item 9.1, it does say consideration of a resolution. So we talk about this next time. We really need to put the resolution in there and
Thank you, Council, Councilman Utecheck. So with that being said, we'll do a roll call vote. Counsel Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Luba?
Aye for tabling.
Counselor Nuccio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Murray?
Aye.
Councilwoman Utecheck?
No.
Counselor Khan?
No.
And I am an aye, so that is five in the be postponed to a future meeting. Thank you, everyone, for the time. This, obviously, you know, we were hoping to get to a final resolution at this meeting, but it was a productive conversation and I think we will get a lot of our ducks in a row at the next meeting. With that being said, moving back to new business, item 8.2, which is a consideration of a resolution for the town council to conduct remote public meetings until further notice, this process will be reviewed at the second in February 2020. So Lisa, if you want to provide a quick summary, because I believe this was a request that you had put forward to the chair and invited the chair to be on the agenda.
Just basically with the increase in COVID, we've had a number of cases in town hall. It's just taking off, as you heard, through the health district tonight. And I'm just trying to keep possible, trying to keep people out of the building as much as possible. I know that there's different views on what lingers in the air, what doesn't linger in the air, what, you know, whether a mask works, whether it doesn't. It's you know, it's all over the place. And my concern is I've been running on a bare bone staff recently because of the pact. So what I had asked was to try to limit, especially tonight, if we had all these people that were here for this meeting in the meeting, that I do not think would have been a very good situation. Um, regarding trying to control the spread of COVID. So my request was just to consider it. Uh, going fully remote until. Um. To get better, you'd revisit it at the second meeting in February to um. Determine if you wanted to continue or not. And so that was my. My request.
Thank you, Lisa. So with that being said, I see Counselor Khan's hand up and then Counselor Nuccio.
Now, I was like, uh, for the last issue, I'm sorry.
Okay, so Councilman Nuccio.
Hi there. So I know it's late and everybody's tired, um, but. I have an issue with this from the perspective of in the implementer bill, there's a law that's passed. If we go fully remote, we have got in this, we discussed this as a town council, Steve, um, all the previous towns members were part of it. If we go fully remote, we have got to comply with the law that says we have to provide a computer. Staff person to monitor that person and an a office building. Space in town hall for people to ob- obta- to participate, holy crap, I'm like. Bumbling because I'm tired, to participate in the meetings. Um, I'm not in favor of changing us to remote. I think from a hybrid model, whoever wants to stay home can stay home. If we're concerned with the town staff, town staff has been promote, has been participating remotely for a while now. Have the ability to participate remotely. Um, if we do one meeting here and there, as the attorney told us back when we did that, that's our prerogative, but to change the meeting format. Regardless of whether or not we think it's going to happen, we have to be prepared to meet the letter of the law. And I don't think we can. Um, we discussed it with Rick when we did this last time. We discussed it as a council. Um. And if somebody does say they want a computer, then a town staff. And take the computer back and everything else. So whereas right now they can participate remotely. At that point, they have to sit there with somebody in town hall. So I respect the fact that everybody is worried about. Um, transmission of Omicron, but I think we can uh, we can maintain this with having staff have the ability to. Call in remotely and then still have people who want to go in live can. Um, and we can do a hybrid model or. A need, we can do the occasional once a month or whatever, remote. If there's a deep cleaning thing or something that's needed, but I'm concerned that the town is not in a position to meet the legal requirements. If we go fully remote for town council. I know other commissions have done it, but they don't have fifty something people that come to a meeting. Um, so to me, it's a little different when we start talking about the major form of government. Going fully remote and not being able to comply with the law. So I'm a no one. That just stay hybrid with the ability for the town staff to have the um, remote capabilities to remote in if they're worried. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio, Councilor Murray, followed by Counselor Regan.
Thank you. If we uh. If we're a hybrid, do we have to have any town staff in the building?
I believe we. To, but in the very least to monitor the owl camera and other uh, equipment.
Right, you would need um. You would need to have someone setting up the owl camera, running the um. The program and everything, the Zoom program. Um, making sure, you know. Everything is set up the way it should be. My concern wasn't more. Yes, there there was one concern of having too many people at a meeting. Always our case of having a lot of people, but like a meeting like tonight, definitely not have been a good situation. Um, but. My more concern was. The more people we're bringing in and out of town hall. You know, we're we're trying to get people in, do your business and get out. That, you know, that's where we're at right now. We're trying to take care of people, but my. I guess I just don't know enough about this disease. To know the truths of whether things linger on tables, they're saying they do, they don't. Um. Whether things linger in the air, in the air conditioning uh, systems. My concern is just having. More and more people in the building and I'm trying to limit that without closing down all. I'm still trying to keep ser. And uh, try to keep people healthy and safe as well.
Thank you. Um, and how many uh, times has it been requested by members of our community? To have uh, the access Counselor Nuccio talked about where a a community member asks for. A computer to be provided to them so that they can attend a remote town council meeting.
May you respond to that?
Yeah, if you have that data or that that.
Never. Um, never.
Thank you.
I know there's other towns also that I checked with that they're. Getting fully remote for a while until things start to calm down as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Murray. Counselor Regan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jones. So I. Um, I'm not sure about all the legal specifics of this, um, but. Citizens, I trust myself to make the best decisions we can for our own safety, so I would support remaining hybrid. I think it's been working for. Uh, it's been working for a while for us. In fact, I I um, supported it. Because more people do attend attend our meetings when we're hybrid, uh, and I would just like to leave it the way it is for now.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Regan. Counselman Yudichak.
First, I would like to apologize. Here, uh, um, everybody out there watching, um, so as far as the remote versus hybrid, um. I just want to just clarify one thing that. Vice Chair Reagan just asked, do you mean? How you like it right now? Cause we've had a couple of remote meetings or like it before. Yeah, that's a question. I just was wondering, just to clarify which one you actually liked.
Keeping it hybrid, I support.
Okay.
Make their own decision, yeah.
I did, just because you said, I was just wanting to clarify, thank you.
Yeah.
Um. Um, so. Like everywhere. Um, COVID's hit and it's going through quickly and we don't have that many town employees to start with. So it sounded like uh, Ms. Hancock last week, you have, was it two or three out, almost a whole department out? Is that correct?
Yeah, I had, um. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five people out just in one area alone. Um, then there's other departments. That had people out as well and it was all, who was in the hospital, who was. Not in the hospital, but homesick with the, and they were all diagnosed with COVID.
Right, so I guess that's a real concern if we. When in our residency to go to town hall and there's not somebody in that department. As well, um, for the town hall. And. Being in council, I like being in council chambers too, I think it's um. It's is a better feel than going this way. But with saying that, I mean, we have just, we get a couple people. In chambers and mostly every. Else is remote, but and I just think if it's just for a couple more weeks, don't think it's gonna have much. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Yudichak, Counselor Luba, followed by Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just uh, to address a a point brought up by uh, Ms. Murray is that. Um, we haven't had anybody ask for uh, for accommodations because the implementer law. And we haven't had a solely remote meeting. Since uh, since before, since before the uh. Uh, the implementer law went into effect, so I think that's, you know, that's one thing that'd be considered because we didn't have that same requirement before. Uh, but as far as the equipment and uh, and manning and stuff like that, is this something that uh? Um, that Lisa, that one of us could be trained on, where if we if we need to, we can set it up and we can take care of it. That we we don't need to have anybody there uh, now. Because everything else could be remote as it is now. I mean, I I think that people have their own agency. If they don't want to be there, they don't have to be there. They could participate hybrid. Um, you know, I it's it's, I just think it's one of those things where. Um, you know, that that we can make accommodations that we, I mean, that we already making accommodations, we could do it hybrid. And that um, that if people don't want to show up, they can do it from remote at home, including council members. We've already made that uh, made that provision within uh, within our regulation. For the, at least for this exception, so I think that's something that we could go forward with. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I don't know if Lisa, if you're able to answer that question. I don't know if if technically it has to be a town staffer or if it it could be a member of the council that could assist a resident.
Oh, a resident, I thought he meant.
Yes, I meant the the owl. And the equipment inside the the council room, thank you.
Certainly, anybody could be trained on doing that. It's um, you know, we're all pretty much. Know how to, you know, secure it and everything else, so if you decided to stay in place, I would probably still be. Coming to the meetings and setting everything up and and managing it. That that wasn't, you know, it wasn't the fact of trying to keep staff out of there. Keep people. But you know, what whatever you guys decide on, that's certainly up to to you. Um. You know.
Yeah.
We'll still have the mask mandate in place and. If if that's what you decide to do.
Alright, thank you, Lisa. Counselor Khan.
Only a couple of comments that uh, I like to. Be. Usual business at town hall, that's number one, and it's like, just because of me. I don't wear masks at my uh, job. Because it's not regulated yet. I don't want to be. If I have something on a bed, if I have something, I don't want to spill out in town hall, that's the number. Number one. So that's my priority, like to keep the town hall open for safe and leave leave it alone. Uh, second. If I. Like to. Uh, as Lou says. That we. We have to be in. In the chamber. It means, do I have to force you, force you or John? Both of you as a chair and worship. Do I have to? Want it to be, uh, how the meeting is going to be?
I might be a little bit confused by the question, but I think in general, we have to vote whenever.
Um. No, I know, a- as I said, if I, if we voted, how. You have to be the mode and then John can be present, how how that is going to be working? It has to be one page.
Yeah, I think we, I think we've had in the past. Reset were remote in the hybrid function where there wasn't always everybody in the room, and I think there's. There's been pretty good functions where people can communicate and and manage it in the event a counselor drops off or or has a a technical issue. Um, I think we we'd be able to manage that.
Okay. I like less more on it than.
Alright, if there's no other discussion, then I would entertain a motion uh. To approve the resolutions outlined in eight point two, that would. Is remote through February or that would be reviewed through the second meeting of February twenty twenty two.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Murray, seconded by Counselor Yudichak. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. For all those in favor, uh, Vice Chair Regan.
No.
Councilman Yudichak.
Yeah.
Councilman Murray.
Yes.
For Luba.
No.
Councilman Nuccio.
No.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that is a four, three uh, vote to make meetings remote through the second meeting of February twenty twenty two, at which time. Uh, will be reviewed. Thank you, everyone. So that being said, we are on to. Eight point three, appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions, uh. Motion to approve. The appointments as laid out in eight point three A through eight point three C.
Oh, Mr. Chair, this is Luba, I'll I'll make a motion.
Alright, motion made by Counselor Luba, seconded by Counselor Murray. Roll call vote, Vice Chair Regan.
I.
Counselor Yudichak.
I, I'm sorry, I.
Hey, Counselor Murray.
Hi.
Counselor Luba.
Hi.
Counselor Nuccio.
Hi.
Counselor Khan.
Hi.
And I'm an I, so it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone who has stepped up to continue serving and serve in the new capacity. Uh, with that being said. I number ten, report of interim town manager. Lisa, if you want to give a high level summary, we can submit questions to you, uh. Unless anyone has a pressing matter.
Um. I'm sorry, what did you just say?
I was just saying for item number ten. The interim town manager, I know. But I was just giving you the leeway to just give a high level summary or or just uh. Not provide too much information and if counselors have any immediate questions, they could uh, reach out.
Um, I'll just very quickly. Just mention a couple of things um, regarding mask mandates and all that. Um, for the time being. I still have the mask. Town hall, I just want to let you know, I've been trying to work with some of the businesses in town. Um, most recently spoke with Big Y Corporate. And what they've um, offered to do and will be doing is they're ramping up their signage. They're gonna be doing more announcements within the store to. Um, for using of masks, um, they're. Um. They're trying to do everything they can to try. With the use of masks, but I won't get into any of the others that I talked to because it's just too much. Uh, very quickly, another thing is there's um. Our new program is going to be going live regarding the interactive map for economic development page. This was the initiative that I tried to put forward to. Um, start finding ways to encourage new development in town, so it provides. Active map that our planning department worked on. To list all the open locations and links to them as to what is allowed. On those particular properties and. We're taking baby steps here after we get that fully up and functioning, we want to start working. Um. With other um, entities to. Work for more development as. As um. Eventually inviting some businesses in, giving them a tour and and things like that. Um, I'm not going to get into anything else. That's pretty much the the biggest things going on right now.
Alright, thank you, Lisa. Seeing no questions, we will move on to item eleven, adoption of minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as laid out in eleven point one.
Make a motion.
So moved by Counselor. Chair Regan. Uh, seeing no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Regan.
I.
Councilman Yudichak.
Hi.
Counselor Murray.
Hi.
Councilman Nuccio.
Hi.
Counselor Luba.
Hi.
Counselor Khan.
Hi.
And I'm an I, so that is unanimous. Uh, correspondence to council, I believe we have passed the torch on to to Katie, to Counselor Murray to do the summary, so. Um, late, last minute emails, those can probably be covered in a future meeting if needed, but.
Sure, I, yes, I I have just covering communications uh, through about uh, six thirty tonight. Um, so anything that came after six thirty would be in the next packet. Uh, I have a total of twelve email communications. Uh, one was a forward of a Connecticut DEP climate change newsletter. Uh, another one was a request for creation. DEI committee, which is diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, with an outline of the activities that committee might provide. Uh, there were three separate email requests to implement a townwide mask mandate. There was a request for better salting of the roads, uh, followed up by a thank you uh, for doing a good job on that. Um, there was three emails that came in expressing support for Miracle Field. There was in. Looking for a full presentation of costs, including maintenance of Miracle Field. Um. There was a email that expressed support for Miracle Field, but not on the Birch Grove site, and there was an email that. And there was an email that supported the recommendations of the mental health task force. Asked a few questions of E H H D and in support of the Miracle Field.
Alright, thank you, Councilor Murray. Uh, moving on to item thirteen, chairs. I don't really have much of one. We did, I did have my first, uh, chairperson's hour. Uh, we did have, uh, the chair and vice chair of the planning zoning commission attend, uh, but most of the discussion was just amongst ourselves. Uh, so hopefully advertise that for the next month for February, uh, and hopefully get some e-blasts out for that to get more resident input. Uh, with that being said, we'll move on to communications and petitions from council persons if there are any. Alright. Sorry, no, go ahead.
Sorry, um, I just wanted to, uh, find out if we had an updated schedule for the town manager search.
I believe, uh, Mike Wilkinson will be sending out a communication. There was, uh, a request of one that we needed an executive session on the eleventh and. Uh, Mike Wilkinson said that there was not one at this time for that purpose. Um, but we will be getting an update from Mike and I'll, and we'll touch base with them after this meeting to, to get an idea of the timeline.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and that key point, we're at item fifteen, public list of participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three minute limit. You can raise your hand with the hand raised icon, uh. Or if you're on a phone, star nine. Seeing David Garrett, you can raise your hand, or your hand is raised, so I'll recognize you, followed by Tim Griffin.
Alright, I'll, I'll be quick because I know you guys are exhausted and I certainly appreciate the effort that you guys put in and. For doing this each week. Um, again, thank you very much for, uh, inviting, uh, myself and fellow. Athletic, uh, club presidents tonight. Um, I think there's a frustration, at least speaking for myself, where. There seems to have been going a lot, a lot going on behind the scenes with this Miracle Field and. Um, as, as you guys appreciate, you know, we're key stakeholders in that, we really haven't been part of the process. Um, a example of that was the discrepancy on the drawing tonight. Where, uh, the engineer for the Miracle Field, uh, you know, had laid out his rectangle, um, showing the, the field, once the fences. Uh, which was my assumption because that's the first time I've ever seen the drawing. Where he clearly was just, you know, showing the outline of the field and I, and I didn't mean to slight him with that, but I think it's a, a great example of how. You know, we have not had a. For any of this, um, I, we certainly appreciate the invite tonight. I'll be honest. I was a little frustrated that, you know, I was limited to two minutes, public participation as an invited guest and forward. Um, that, you know, we, uh, is, is the town soccer club and are over five hundred, uh, current. Uh, youth members have a seat at the table. At the end of the day, we all want to do what's best for town. Uh, we, we all want to really. Go in. Um, and as I said at the top, you know, this is a, this is a great opportunity in this field. However, we need to make sure that it's additive and it's not a replacement that we're trading, that we're horse trading. You know, soccer for, for Miracle Field baseball. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett, and appreciate the feedback. Definitely want to improve upon that going forward. Uh, Tim Griffin?
Yes, thank you very much, Tim Griffin, eighty dough run. Uh, thanks for having me tonight to talk about the Miracle Field. And mentioned, uh, having the, the teams and the leagues back in here to discuss this further makes a whole lot of sense and I agree with, uh, what Mr. Garrett had to say. Couple minutes ago and also this has to be some sort of record for a town council meeting, four hours and thirty seven minutes, but thanks for all you do. Bye bye.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I believe the last council has a record of right before midnight, we, uh, we convened, but. Are readjourned, but with that being said, uh, if there's.
Can I just say something? I thank you, Dave and Tim. And, yeah, and that's impressive as well.
Absolutely.
You others too.
Yeah, so with that being said, uh, we are at adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn at eleven thirty, eight P M.
So moved.
So moved by.
Aye.
I object.
We're doing a roll call, who, I know we're hitting the silly, silly hour, but, uh.
We may get to twelve.
No.
Okay, Councilman Utechek?
No, I, yes, so my, yes, was.
Councilman Murray?
Yes, yes.
Councilor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Nuccio?
Aye.
Councilor Khan?
Aye.
And I am an I, so it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.